Thank you very much.
Spare pen.
What do you need?
Spare pen. Pen.
Oh, here. I was just.
Good morning.
Oh, you ordered that one? Okay, yeah, yeah, sure. Sorry, didn't mean to rip out of your.
Let's call our meeting to order December fourteenth, 2022. For the Deschutes County Board of Commissioners, please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the five United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, a nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We did receive two emails last week on the seventh after our meeting, and they were both in support of Royal Park. So, thank you for those emails and want to recognize this. Is there anyone in the room? I see no blue sheets. Anyone on Zoom that had a comment this morning? All right, okay. Our consent agenda?
Move approval of the consent agenda.
And I will second it.
Any further discussion? Commissioner Chang?
Yes.
Commissioner DeBonne?
Yes.
And the Chair votes yes. So that puts us at item number seven. Dave Doyle.
Morning Commissioners. Item number seven is consideration of adoption of ordinance 2022-012, which enacts new Deschutes County Code Section 2.04.052. That provides for the change in the mode of selection of Commissioners from partisan to nonpartisan. As you'll recall, in this recent November election, ballot measure nine dash one forty-eight was passed by the electors of the county. It was passed sixty-one point two-four percent versus thirty-eight point seven-six percent, and that provides that the, the, the method, the mode for selecting county Commissioners will now be, moving forward, a nonpartisan. And so, there was no need for a public hearing in, as a result, because the voters approved this and state statute, which is cited there in Section Two of the ordinance, provides that this ordinance, this ordinance will take effect immediately. There's no requirement for an emergency adoption. It, it happens automatically by emergency because the voters approved it, and now you're enacting this code provision to put that in place. So if you have any questions, certainly willing to, I suppose, if there's anyone in the room or on Zoom that might want to comment on it, even though it's not a public hearing, you could certainly entertain, entertain that, but I'm not sure there's a whole lot of a discretion point here.
Thank you. Thank you, thank you, Mr. Doyle, for that. I'm getting it on our agenda, in a timely matter, extremely timely, so thank you. Any other questions, any other comments?
I have some comments.
Okay.
So, the, the electors of Deschutes County voted sixty-one percent to thirty-nine percent to end partisan Commissioner seats and partisan primaries, expressing a clear preference for pragmatic problem solvers versus entrenched partisans. I, I would like to take a moment to recognize the chief petitioners and volunteers who went out and gathered seven thousand-plus signatures to get the nonpartisan County Commissioner ballot measure on the ballot, which allowed the voters of Deschutes County to make this choice and to make Deschutes County government better for generations to come. Personally, I'm very glad that we are ending closed partisan primaries in the county. They disenfranchise voters, sixty-two thousand-plus voters in Deschutes County who are not Democrats or Republicans, and partisan primaries, closed partisan primaries, give pretty much all of the power to partisan registered voters to elevate candidates in Commissioner races. So, good riddance to partisan primaries, and I'm just extremely happy that we are moving forward with this change to Deschutes County Code.
Okay, any other comments?
Well, a couple of comments. You know, ever since I've been in office, it's been discussed, so for many years, we've been asked about nonpartisan seats. We talked to other Commissioners around the state and nonpartisan seats, and they seem to be pleased with the process. You know, a value of having partisan seats, partisan, is, I think of it as a starting point, just a starting point, you know? These are the values I'm starting with when I look at the platform of the Republican Party or the platform of the Democratic Party here in Deschutes and the state of Oregon. That's a starting point. You know, when I run for office, I'm running to serve everybody in Deschutes County, and I want them to understand generally where I'm coming from. So, as I say, I, I do, you know, want to thank the League of Women Voters for taking the lead on this, getting it to a vote of the people, and I've always said a vote of the people is what we need on this topic, because we have had the authority as a board to make this choice, and I'd never wanted to do that with just three people. So, the people are engaged, people have spoken, I'm supportive of this, but as I say, what, what values are you bringing to office? Sometimes people might, you know, sign up for office with a real strong positions and not talk about it. So it's just a starting point in those values as people run for office. So, a, a message to the voters, please be engaged, understand who you're voting for, but that's, that's the big picture.
Yes. Yes, definitely. I'm glad we're in America where we can vote, so important, important election, and we're going forward from there. Can we have a motion then, please?
I, one, one other comment, and just kind of to follow, you know, follow, follow some of the thoughts that have been shared here. We have heard from many people in the community that there should be five Commissioners instead of three for a county of two hundred thousand people. And, you know, if, if there are people who choose to move forward with pressing for a ballot measure, to do that, I, I hope that this Board of Commissioners would consider referring it directly to the voters rather than forcing interested community advocates to have to go out and gather seven thousand signatures or probably more in the next election to be able to qualify for the ballot. That is something that is our option to do. It is not a decision on the issue, it is just expediting the process of posing the question to the voters, which I agree is a very important thing to do in situations like this. And with that, I'll go ahead and move approval of ordinance number twenty-two-two-dash-zero-one-two, enacting Section 2.04.052 of the Deschutes County Code.
And I will second it.
Any further discussion? Commissioner Chang?
Yes.
Commissioner DeBonne?
Yes.
And the Chair votes yes.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Yes, congratulations.
Okay, we have item number eight.
Good morning Commissioners. For the record, Tarek Rawlings, I'm an Associate Planner in Development Department, and before he today is consideration of second reading of ordinance twenty-two-two-dash-zero-one-one. This is a plan amendment zone change for property, three properties located along North Highway ninety-seven. They total about nineteen point one-two acres. This is following, twenty-three days after the first reading of this ordinance, just earlier in, in November. So, kind of full picture, this follows a quasi-judicial process that started with the application in October of last year, and then that culminated in a hearings officer public hearing in April twenty-sixth of 2022. The hearings officer issued a recommendation of approval on July twelfth of this year. The Board then held a public hearing on September seventh, closed the written record period, and then deliberated to an approval on September twenty-eighth, with two of the Commissioners voting in favor. So the majority resulted in an approval or a deliberation to an approval of this ordinance. And then first reading, like I just mentioned, was conducted on November twenty-first, twenty-three days ago, so we're following up that first reading with a second reading here today. So, available for any questions you might have, but this is, again, applicant is LBNW LLC, and this is from, the zone would be from exclusive farm use to rural industrial, and the plan amendment would be from agricultural to rural industrial as well. And so, available for any questions you might have.
Tarek, Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas, Happy Holidays.
Thank you so much for being here today. Did you say the, it first started in October of twenty-one? Is that correct?
When they first applied, and then there's usually a series of kind of review and completeness checks and different types of tweaking of the applicant, application materials at that point. So, once that was all ironed out, a lot of transportation questions, things like that had originally arisen, and then once it was marked complete, we scheduled that hearings officer, public hearing in April. So, while it was applied for in October, there was a lot going on, kind of behind the scenes, up until that HO hearing in April.
Great, okay.
Are there any changes from the first reading?
Have been no changes, yeah. It's kind of, it's the same exhibits, it's essentially second reading of the same materials you saw twenty-three days ago, so, and not that we were within any open record period, but I've gotten no types of comments or anything else outside of really these exhibits that you saw.
Great. Well, with that, I'll move approval of second reading of ordinance number twenty-two-two-dash-zero-one-one.
And I will second it.
Just to clarify, is that by title only?
By title only, thank you very much.
Okay.
For further discussion, I'll just reiterate that I do not agree with the hearings officer's analysis and recommendation that this is, that these are not viable agricultural lands.
Any other comment from, no. Okay, calling for the vote then, Commissioner DeBonne?
Yes.
Commissioner Chang?
No.
And the Chair votes yes. By title only, approving an ordinance amending Deschutes County Code Title Twenty-three, the Deschutes County Comprehensive Plan to Change the Comprehensive Plan Map Designation for Certain Property from Agriculture to Rural Industrial, and amending Deschutes County Code Title Eighteen, the Deschutes County Zoning Map to Change the Zone Designation for Certain Property from Exclusive Farm Use to Rural Industrial. Ordinance number twenty-two-two-dash-zero-one-one.
An adoption? Yeah, so, at this time, there'll be, I'll make a motion to adopt ordinance number twenty-two-two-dash-zero-one-one.
Okay, and I will second that motion? Any further discussion? Commissioner DeBonne?
Yes.
Commissioner Chang?
No.
And the Chair votes yes.
Thank you very much, Commissioners. And just to be clear, there's a ninety-day adoption clock, kind of from right now. There'll be a twenty-one-day appeal period within that ninety days, and so we're looking at March fourteenth of 2023 is when that would be a final adoption date. So we'll, we'll kind of take it from there. We'll see if anything comes in the twenty-one days, and then if not, we'll see you in mid-March. But thank you very much for your time, Commissioners.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for coming over, braving the elements out there. Okay, item number nine.
Nice to see you all. For the record, my name's Hallie King, Associate Planner with Deschutes County, and following, similar to Tarek's last item, this is also a consideration of second reading for ordinance number twenty-two-two-zero-one-three, which is an ordinance to approve the Eden Properties Plan Amendment Zone Change Application. And just to kind of remind you of, of the process leading up to now, we, a hearings officer issued a recommendation of approval in June of this year, with the Board holding a public hearing on August seventeenth, with deliberations on September twenty-eighth, and the Board deliberated in the majority to approve the application, and we held the first reading on November twenty-first, twenty-three days ago, and again are now here for the second reading. And so if there's any questions, happy to answer, but at this point, we would look for a motion to adopt the, the ordinance.
Thank you. Thank you, Hallie. Hallie.
Yeah.
Hallie, I know. I know. My niece is Healy, so, let's get that one straight. Any other comments?
I'll move approval of second reading of ordinance, by title only, of ordinance number twenty-two-two-dash-zero-one-three.
And I will second it.
And in terms of additional comments, I'll, I'll restate again that I disagree with the hearings officer's analysis and recommendation on this application. I, I think we heard very compelling testimony that this property could be used for dryland grazing as part of a viable ranching operation during, during the hearings.
As someone who grew up with dryland grazing with the Rocky Hillside, on one side of our, our ranch, you could barely put a cow out there, and you would always see rattlesnakes. So, that's my fondest memories of the Rocky Hillside.
Yeah, that, the.
I know, it doesn't count, but it was my real, that's my real life experience, so I wanted to say it. Thank you so much.
This, this property is a plateau. It is not.
It's a plateau, well, yes, but it has rocks.
And the, the primary productivity of that plateau has been taken up with growing juniper for several decades. If those juniper were not there, all that prime, primary productivity could be going into growing grass and, and shrubs.
Okay, any other comments? Commissioner DeBonne, your vote?
Calling for the vote, I'll, I'll vote yes.
Okay, Commissioner Chang?
No.
And the Chair votes yes. Moving approval by title only, an ordinance amending Deschutes County Code Title Twenty-three, the Deschutes County Comprehensive Plan to Change the Comprehensive Plan Map Designation for Certain Property from Agricultural to Rural Residential Exception Area, and amending Deschutes County Code Title Eighteen, the Deschutes County Zoning Map to Change the Zone Designation for Certain Property from Exclusive Farm Use to Rural Residential. Ordinance number twenty-two-two-dash-zero-one-three.
At this time, I'll move adoption of ordinance twenty-two-two-dash-zero-one-three.
I will second it. Any further comments?
So, comments, you know, this is a process that we've gone through here. The hearings officer decision provided this approval. In the big picture, you know, the state of Oregon led the, the way on using soils analysis, history of farming for approval at the Stevens Track on the edge of Bend, and now we've seen a few of these. So remember, this was a hearings officer approval that came to us, it wasn't overturned. You know, the applicants has, has stated, they want to do a low energy, low water use, new generation, integrated solar opportunities out there, and I'm not speaking for them, but that's what I've heard through this process. You know, we've got these lands that are zoned resource, and I have a hunch that, you know, back in the late seventies and the early eighties, when people around the state were doing zoning, you got to kind of the eighty-twenty rule, where everybody defined the high-value farmland, the natural water flow opportunities for irrigation, and that last ten or twenty percent was like, well, we don't have a decision here, it's not really high-value farmland or resource land, but when in doubt, let's just call it resource land. So that's been fifty years ago. You know, if there's supposed to be, if, if there's a vision for, you know, crossroad towns and small rural areas and then open space in between them, which I support and I love, it's beautiful opportunity, what we've done here in Oregon, maybe there's a zone called open space zone with a lot lower taxes, you know, because this has been taxed for resource land, and if it's not resource land, it's, it's a lot higher taxed if it doesn't have a tax, a farming deferral, no history of water, irrigation water, no history of farming for a profit in hundreds or thousands of years. So trying to force somebody to farm and hold on to that resource land and be taxed for it, it's just not a fair system. So we're just getting to that point, maybe fifty years later, we should take a look at this. As I say, maybe it should be zoned open space, and, and the taxes be very minimal on something like that, and it could be held with confidence by people being able to enjoy that. So, with that, I'm, I'm excited to support this. As I say, hesitant to take, you know, we're in a quasi-judicial land use decision-making position here, so it isn't opinions as much as what we see on the land. So with those, those points, I'm happy to support this, adoption of this ordinance.
Yeah, and my comments and thoughts up to now have been very specifically focused on the application at hand, the piece of land at hand. This piece of land is just like thousands or tens of thousands of other acres of EFU-zoned land across eastern Oregon that is used as portions of viable ranching operations. What makes this piece of land challenging to use profitably for agriculture, in this specific case, is the price that was paid for the property in, I believe, 2019, which is not a price that someone would pay for a piece of land if they were intending to use it for agriculture. By driving up the price of the piece of land, it makes it unviable, economically unviable to use the land for agricultural purposes. So that's the basis of my disagreement with the hearings officer's recommendation, not a decision, recommendation to us, which we can take or leave as we see fit.
Back to the motion for moving adoption. Commissioner DeBonne?
Yes.
Commissioner Chang?
No.
And the Chair votes yes, moving adoption of ordinance number twenty-two-two-dash-zero-one-three.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, and Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas.
Oh, Janice, you're in the room, yes. Good morning.
Good morning Commissioners. For the record, I'm Janice Garceau, Director of Health Services, and I am here this morning to request consideration and Board approval of document number twenty-two-two-dash-nine-eight-one, which in effect accepts a non-competitive grant from Pacific Source for the Behavioral Health Workforce Diversity Initiative. We presented on this grant either a week or two weeks ago, I'm losing track of time, apologies, but specifically, the grant is intended to help the community, help our coordinated care organization, our agency, meet some of the new metrics around language access for the people that we serve. This particular grant provides forty-seven thousand dollars to hire a temporary twenty-hour-a-week language access liaison to support the work of our language access unit. It provides an additional fifty thousand dollars to cover contracted services. We provide lots of language services via contract, doing interpretation of documents, et cetera. Ten thousand dollars for translation software, thirty-five thousand dollars for direct staff training as needed on working with interpreters and working with people with either language barriers or hearing barriers or any access barriers that involve the use of language, and then a small amount for barrier removal and incentives through culturally and linguistically specific communication and outreach material for our Latinx and Spanish-speaking population. That grant was in fact awarded, as we knew that it would be, since the outreach was directly from the CCO to apply, and we are, again, requesting approval of the award contract.
And so do you think you can fill this position at half-time?
Yes, absolutely. These kinds of positions we can fill fairly easily. They do require a technical skill, but they are not necessarily a master's level or even a bachelor's level position. They may be someone that has a certification to provide language services, so they tend to be easier to fill.
So how many Spanish dual-speaking employees do we have currently in the Health Department?
We have fewer than we had.
I know, I, I know, we were having.
Yeah, I don't know, I don't know the number, I know the percent. So we used to be staffed more in alignment with our community, so we have about an eight percent Spanish-speaking community, and we are roughly around four percent right now of our overall staff who are bilingual in Spanish.
All right, but, but you're, you feel good about this one?
I, I feel good about filling this particular position. It's really, I mean, we're really working with our other incentives, as you, as we've made you aware, our tuition reimbursement incentives and other kinds of incentives to grow our own internal staff who are bilingual. So, we, we want to recruit and retain bilingual staff, and we want to give great staff opportunities to achieve a higher level of education if we can, so.
Janice, my impression is that as part of the, you know, COVID team, you know, within, maybe within contractors or within temporary workforce, we added some significant, you know, language and bilingual capacity.
We did.
Is, is it possible that some of those people, you know, as the, as the COVID response ramps down, that we might be able to, to pick up some of those people for positions like this?
I, I think that's absolutely possible, and I, and I hope that as we have traditional health worker positions, peer support specialist positions become available, case management positions even in some instances, we can access, you know, other opportunities for those staffers, so, yeah.
Thank you.
Any more questions? Is there a motion?
I'll move approval of document number twenty-two-two-dash-nine-eight-one, accepting a grant from Pacific Source for Behavioral Health Workforce Diversity.
And I will second it.
Any further discussion? Commissioner Chang?
Yes.
Commissioner DeBonne?
Yes.
And the Chair votes yes. Thank you, Janice.
There we go, congratulations.
Thank you, Commissioners. Have a good holiday.
Merry Christmas.
Yes, thank you.
Or you might, maybe, unless you're leaving town now. Okay, we're at item number eleven. Well, good morning.
Hello.
Nice to see you guys in person.
Nice to see you.
I hear we're going to have a bus going every fifteen minutes up to Mount Bachelor.
Absolutely.
Okay. Derek, you're not going to be driving one, are you?
Nope, not yet.
Okay.
Maybe. Other duties as required.
Good morning Board, Chris Dody, Road Department, for the record. As you're aware, I think Deschutes County is the qualified entity for distribution of ODOT transit funds and other federal funds via the state's STIF program. Deschutes County Contract. Deschutes County contracts with COIC and CET to conduct and coordinate the required processes associated with distribution and collection of applications, so on and so forth. And that includes work with the county's advisory committee that the board has appointed in those positions. The twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-five funding cycle is upon us. The advisory committee has met, made their recommendations based on a call for applications. And so here today to walk us through that whole process, various projects, and before you have a motion to hopefully approve the advisory committee's recommendations, but Derek Hoffbauer, Andrea Bro, with COIC, CET, to walk us through that. I'm gonna head back to the peanut gallery now, you're in good hands.
Peanut gallery, okay.
So now, this is the first time the STF and fifty-three ten dollars are all together for especially a whole biennium too now.
Yeah, so Derek Hoffbauer, Outreach and Engagement Administrator for COIC, yeah, so I thought I'd provide a little background of kind of the process and what we've approved with the commission thus far, and then talk about this next round of funding and the projects, and Andrea can provide some more detail. And so the last time we were here in August, it was to approve the advisory committee bylaws for a new consolidated committee, and so, yes, you're correct, Commissioner Devon, this is the statewide transportation improvement fund now merging with the special transportation fund. And so the pot of money, it's a little bigger, it's a more efficient process because we have one committee instead of two committees, and so we approved those bylaws. We have a consolidated committee as well. We have several members from the former STF committee moving over into the STIF committee, so now there's just one overarching committee. As Chris mentioned, that committee met last week, December sixth, to review and prioritize the projects for this coming biennium. And included in that STIF plan, those are the statewide transportation improvement fund projects, there are also some carryover funds, unspent funds from the last cycle that have been, you know, allocated to various projects like the new routes in Redmond, you know, continued operations, Community Connectors, things like that. And then there's also the fifty-three ten funding, which supports seniors and people with disabilities, transit services for those individuals, and that is kind of a separate project, but the timelines are all aligning together, and so we have that ask to approve the fifty-three ten projects as well, and those were reviewed by the advisory committee. So I think most importantly to note, and this was the first time we've actually had more requests for funding than funding available, you know, we're seeing inner city transit providers like Central Oregon Breeze, Pacific Crest Bus Lines with COVID really, you know, affecting their operations. They're now looking to this funding source to help preserve some of their routes and to be able to maintain that service, and so we've worked collaboratively with their organizations to incorporate them in the STIF plan, as well as the City of Sisters. As you all know, they're developing a mobility hub out there, so you'll see funding for that project as well. And then in addition, Opportunity Foundation of Central Oregon, they've historically applied for those STF funds, and now they're at the table in this process with a collaborative approach, and we did, the advisory committee did decide to fund them in whole. So as presented, you'll see the list of projects and the total amount of funding, including the carryover funds, and we are here to answer any questions you might have about specific projects or the advisory committee process, anything that you'd like further information or clarification on, we're happy to discuss.
So I have a question on page two of our handout. It says CET sub recipient projects, so it's in a blue heading, and then it says, is that including, does that mean the commute options and the Pacific Crest? Are those supposed to be underneath that category? Is that?
Yeah.
Because there was nothing listed there, I mean, no dollar amount.
Yes, they are. That's just kind of a header for the projects that are listed underneath that are within CET's application.
So then the carryover includes Route thirty-one, and was that the route from Lapine to Sun River?
Yep.
My favorite route. And does that mean that it still has a life, perhaps?
Yes, there is funding that we carry over from the previous STIF plans, so Route thirty-one's budget is in the program reserves, as well as Route twenty-five, Crooked River Ranch to Redmond.
Okay, so has that one had any action at all?
Yes, I would say Route twenty-five, we started it the day after Labor Day. It's gained some traction, it's definitely had, probably between, on any given day, a highlight of eighteen to twenty people needing to go into Terabon or Redmond for shopping and medical. We've also highlighted a few students, RPA students, that are from the ranch that have had difficulty finding transportation. It operates Monday through Friday, and it also deviates if you need to get to a particular medical appointment, it could drop you off at a dentist or a doctor's office. So we actually just spoke to a reporter last week that was interested in learning about it, so it's definitely gained in popularity. The snow shoveling this past weekend was a little difficult out in the ranch, but we still were able to serve come Monday morning.
Okay, so you've got students and other people riding in that route, and you said eighteen to twenty a day?
Yeah, at its max, that's probably what we're seeing in terms of ridership.
On each, on each bus or for the whole day?
No, there's only a few, there's only three runs per day.
Three runs?
So that would be over three runs, yep.
I was able to take the bus last night from Bend to Lapine, so, because I had, the way our cars work, my wife took the car home, I said, I'll just hike over there, and it was a great experience, there was about six of us on the bus last night, and got there right at five twenty for a five twenty-two departure, and you could see that, you know, kind of zigzagging out of town is the tricky part to get rolling, because when I, when I get in my car, I can just get on the bypass and go, but getting, getting out of town in the intersections and driving down Third Street, but everybody's in a good mood, the bus was in good shape, it was nice and warm in there last night, you know, on a cold night, so firsthand experience, current rider. So, yeah, an observation is, it looks like the, you know, the project plan for a whole biennium was pretty simple now, as in big categories, and then, you know, funding amounts in the carryover program reserve, program administration, operations, you know, just big chunks of dollars. So I guess it's good to know that, you know, we're able to keep it this simple at this level. I know there's lots of moving parts and pieces and making choices every day, you know, figure out which routes and getting the drivers going, but yeah, what's the status with the driver, driver, yeah, fulfillment?
Sure, so we did do two rounds of union negotiations in the calendar year 2021. We increased base pay around thirty percent. Unfortunately, I don't think that's enough, given where we are with employment. So we are expecting another round of negotiations, both for the Bend contracted labor and CET employees. The other, you know, moving parts that we've mentioned in the, you know, previous cycles, we are procuring more vehicles that do not require CDL, so that people just have their basic license. We are seeing those vehicles slowly starting to be built out of Ford. It's finally getting back to its normal schedule, but it's been.
You've had them on order and.
Yes.
Got to get them in.
Is that the six thousand dollar, or six million dollar carryover then, for the buses that happen?
Yeah, so a lot of that's capital dollars for the fleets. We do not pay for the buses until they're physically delivered, we inspect them, and then we seek reimbursement, so. Yep, a majority of them are kind of the newer Ford Transits, which you're seeing, kind of the slate gray, again, non-CDL. And, you know, we are just moving to smaller vehicles because that's kind of the easier, quicker vehicle to procure at this point.
Purchasing vehicles that kind of are already colored that, that road grime gray or whatever.
Yes, less dirty than white.
Well, because the white ones, man, as soon as you pull out, they're just a mess.
Yes, so we have been able to retain vehicle washers, surprisingly, but again, during the winter season.
Oh, yeah.
They wash it and.
Twenty minutes later, I know.
All it takes is one round and.
That's all it takes.
Yes.
So how many people do the smaller buses hold?
They're anywhere between kind of eight and twelve passenger with two wheelchair lift positions, and then you can bridge those up and put more passengers in.
Well, as I say, the, you know, just the route getting out of town, I know that the mobility hubs will help that too, if we can, you know, spread them out in different places instead of the urban core, I'm referring to the Bend Transit Center here, and, you know, because there's a lot of traffic, right, and at all those intersections, so that'll be a big phase. So how much kind of development towards that in this next biennium? I guess, what's the vision? Where are we going to be two years from now?
Sure, so I will say kind of what's already been funded and will be happening pretty quickly is we redesigned Hawthorne Station parking lot. There's some space in front of that building and then two lots in the back that are underutilized. The design has been done, we are finally ending the permits required by the City of Bend for type two site analysis, and we begin construction in the spring of twenty-three. Basically, that's going to bring all the vehicles onto the property, not on Hawthorne and Fourth and the smaller neighborhoods.
So that's the next step, okay.
That's the, that's the biggie, and then we are working with our partners such as ODOT and Bend Parks and Rec on potential land surplus for a second location.
Surplus land.
Not much, not.
I know, that's the tricky part.
So it's really exciting to see these state and federal funds going into this suite of projects that are really going to increase mobility and accessibility for people in our community. One of the things I'm trying to keep track of is the discussions on the transit district, the formation of a transit district, because I think it would be really great to have a district governing body specifically dedicated to these, these issues and programs overseeing these funds rather than us. Can you, can you give us a sense of what the, what the, what the vision is at this point for exploring and calling for a vote of, you know, on a transit district?
Absolutely, so we have an agreement with the City of Bend, both to provide services and then working within their right of way, and those two agreements will be extended and amended at the end of this calendar year. The major agreement speaks to finding a more sustainable funding source for the City of Bend's fixed route system and paratransit system, and what CET is doing to progress in that direction. The next step for us is potentially hiring a consultant to see what feasibly makes sense. You know, this is big transit territory that CET is just simply not knowledgeable in, so we are going to be seeking guidance on what transit agencies of our size, you know, the revenue and the services that we can provide, and so that would be the next step we're going to be taking during calendar year twenty-three, is to really gather all of that information before we would, you know, go out to the voters.
So state put in a statewide transportation payroll tax, and, you know, is there a vision that a transit district would need more revenue?
Well, the first piece of a transit district is not so much taxing, is that the STIF funding would be coming directly to COIC. So just labbing ourselves as a district eliminates some of the pass-through agreements that would be created. So that would be the first step towards some of the efficiencies that we would like to see.
Yeah, and I would add that, you know, we've seen increases in ridership, especially compared with last year, our Community Connector services, the regional services that feed into Bend and Redmond, those are at about pre-pandemic levels, so we've gotten our system back on track, ridership is good, our dial-a-ride, our Bend dial-a-ride is growing exponentially, it has increased substantially, and so, you know, we're seeing a lot of people use the system, a lot of people benefit from the system, and our ridership's really good, so I think that helps with this effort of promoting transit, having it being a viable option, you know. One family member's going to know someone who uses, they might not use it themselves, but, you know, maybe Aunt Sally, you know, uses the dial-a-ride system, and, you know, so this is important as we go out and do some outreach and try to become a transit district, because the voters do have to approve it, so.
When I was at OSU Cascades in November, they wanted to know how they could get a better bus route up there, so I'm wondering, is that on your plan somewhere?
Yeah, actually, both OSU and COCC were in conversations. We originally had service back a number of years ago, we pulled it for low ridership, but now that there's a lot of development on the west side, we're going to be having those conversations against to bring back more service to that location.
How long will that take?
Oh, with, the great thing about STIF dollars is that they're pretty flexible in creating a new route like that. Like I said, our main constraint is the human being to drive the bus, so.
Well, in making a statement that ridership is good, I think, from my experience on the COIC board and seeing this over the years, I think ridership is abysmal, as in, we should be having choice riders with a attache and a cup of coffee on that bus all day, every day, and, you know, ridership is good, is such a, you know, a low bar at this point, is my point, we got to bring that way up. You know, if we're going to be spending all these dollars, everybody that's working is paying for this system, I'd love to see a lot more commuters there, and I've always figured somehow, someday, we're just going to take a moment and stop, reset, rebrand, and go big. I don't know exactly what that looks like, but I've always wanted to get there.
Sure, and I can speak to a little bit of the, kind of the behind the scenes things that do not involve drivers or actual operations, is the STIF funds from a previous cycle paid for the new CAT ABL system, it's the technology in the buses. We went live in September with the on-demand platform, we went live December first with the fixed route. These are adding amenities like free Wi-Fi in the bus, GPS, you get to physically see where the bus is moving on the earth, texting, real-time reservations, all of the platforms in transportation that kind of, you know, your Uber and Lyft sees. So we are just in the first few weeks of fixed route, seeing how that goes, and so some of these kind of amenities speak to that choice rider that we were unable to capture. So I'm hoping that some of these, you know, more technological advances for the transit system will, will help gain that kind of ridership.
I was just thinking, I probably wouldn't carry an attache, but I do carry a backpack once in a while, so we'll see, maybe that's the wrong vision, but, you know, really getting there, you know, adding, adding capacity to a route because the buses are so full. You know, I don't know if, we haven't seen that ever, have we?
Right.
I mean, we're putting routes in, trying to find the people and the commute routes, but.
The recreation ones are full.
Oh, yeah, I know, yeah, unless you want to go with a huge inner tube in the summer.
So you're seeing it on Mount Bachelor. Bend Parks and Rec just completed a study along with Hayden Homes about events during the summer, and we are now part of that planning process to reduce congestion and the need to bring multiple cars, and so there are those niches that we can get more of the choice ridership, we just need to figure out how to better do that on the core public transit system.
What about our county fair? Did you, did you guys do anything for the county fair?
We did. I would say it's a mixture of when we were doing COVID and then cooling shelters, and so there was a couple other things that were going on, but we did serve the fairgrounds for a multitude of reasons back in 2020 and 2021, so.
But you didn't do it this last year?
No, not this past year, but I will say where we're gaining the most traction right now for, in terms of new services, choice ridership, is Smith Rock State Park. They have exceeded their parking limit, and they have just started reaching out to us about potentially shuttling people to that park to meet demand, so.
So where do you pick them up at?
That's all part of the planning process. We would like to stay on this side of US ninety-seven, so we wouldn't have to cross it, but.
Good idea.
Yep.
I'd just like to say, I would also very much like to see ridership expanding for, for the system, but, you know, I look at that in a, in a pretty big picture kind of way. In places where public transit systems are heavily used, what we see is a density of residences and workplaces along those routes, and that is, that is a growth management and land use choice that is made by certain regions and certain communities to create the conditions for people to actually efficiently and effectively use public transit. So for us as a land use authority, you know, one of the land use authorities in the region, we should, you know, if we, if we really embrace that vision of lots of people using the bus, then we have to establish the patterns of human settlement that support that.
And I will just speak a little bit on land use, again, behind the scenes, not directly related to service or operations, particularly with the City of Bend, the City of Redmond, anytime there is, you know, multifamily development, dense residential, they are required to reach out to the transit provider, and we ensure that there is bus stop infrastructure as that's being built. So we may not be serving that area today. So we may not be serving that area today, but the infrastructure will be there for us when that's built, and we can serve the area in the future.
Yeah, I mean, you look at, you know, I know, nobody wants to be like Portland, but one thing that they, that the Portland metro area has done well is they have created, you know, higher density along transportation corridors, and that makes that MAX bus, MAX train system and their bus systems work incredibly well. I just, I was, I just had the opportunity to use the MAX system on Monday. I stayed, you know, I stayed way outside of Portland, out in Gresham on Sunday night, took the, took the train line into the convention center for the Oregon Business Summit on Monday. And it was, it was great not to have to drive into Portland and try to find a place to park.
Well, it's a, you know, a big, big, high-level plan, a lot of money flowing through here, so I'm pleased to support this, knowing this is the stepping into the next biennium and the projected stiff dollars as the system evolves. So I'll move board approval of the STIF Project Advisory Committee's allocation of STIF funding for the 2023-25 project cycle and 5310 federal funding allocations and sub-allocation method as proposed.
Second.
Any further discussion? Do you believe that the $6 million carryover will be spent then within this next year? Or is it hard to know?
That's our hope, and that also keeps us in good graces of ODOT. So it is a goal of ours to spend that down within the first fiscal year.
Okay. And then you have almost 12 million for this next period? And that's, that's a combination of the employee tax and what else then? Do you know the breakdown of that?
More STF funding, which was, I think, lottery and cigarette tax.
And a little bit of gas tax in there.
I think it's federal, isn't it?
STF is the state.
STF is the state.
Okay.
So it's all state funding then?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, all right. So? Do we have a motion then?
Yeah, that was made.
Okay, so Commissioner Chang?
Yes.
Commissioner DeBonne?
Yes.
And the chair of votes, yes.
Good to see you, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming in.
Thank you.
Number 12? I think Cody's in the room. Good morning, Cody, Merry Christmas.
Good morning, Merry Christmas. For the record, Cody Smith, county engineer, Deschutes County Road Department. So board, as you're well aware, over the last almost three years, Road Department's been working on the preliminary engineering for the Hunnel Road, Loco Road to Tumalo Road project. The project includes modernization, some slight realignment for Hunnel Road along that corridor, Hunnel Road being a collector road that is currently a gravel road. The project was identified as a high, is identified as a high priority project in the county TSP. So finally, we're, we've, we've reached a big milestone here. We got the project out to bid. The department advertised the project for bids starting on November 9th, and we opened bids on December, December 7th. Six bids were received. Before you this morning is a notice of intent to award contract to the lowest responsive bidder, High Desert Aggregate and Paving, Inc., in the amount of $5,65,674. So subject to approval, posting a notice of intent of award will begin a one-week protest period for interested parties to protest award of the contract. After that period, and if no substantive protest are received, the contract would be awarded administratively. Wanted to note that with development of the fiscal year '23 through '27 Road Capital Improvement Plan approximately a year ago, the department had anticipated a total project cost of $5.6 million, which included $764,000 in preliminary engineering costs, $216,000 in right-of-way acquisition costs, and $4.7 million in construction costs. Over the last year, construction prices, like many other things, have experienced some significant increases due to inflation. The quoted unit prices from recent county road projects, as well as some recent ODOT projects, were used in the development of the, of the department's engineer's estimate for this project, which, which the board probably noted was significantly higher than the bids we received. That was, again, primarily due to utilizing those recently quoted prices. And when I'm saying recently, I'm talking about prior to July of this year, for the most part. July was kind of a, when, when we experienced the peak of, in particularly asphalt concrete prices, after July, the index for asphalt concrete in Oregon at least has started to go down, and we've seen it go down significantly over the last couple months. So anyways, thankfully, strong competition coupled with some moderate stabilization and certainty regarding those asphalt oil prices yielded more favorable bid prices. Do want to note that, that part of this total construction contract, excuse me, $221,000 of the, of the total contract amount includes some reimbursable work that we will be doing on behalf of Avion Water. It will be subject to a reimbursable agreement that, that is pending presently, but we will be getting that in place soon. So with all that said, the current total project estimated cost is $6.3 million or $6.1 million if you, if you don't include that, that reimbursable work by Avion, for Avion Water. Detailed construction schedule is currently pending from the contractor. Kind of general schedule, though, we anticipate that construction hopefully will kick off here towards the end of January. January through March is primarily going to be focused on work for the, the swallow irrigation facilities that cross Hunnel Road. Once the irrigation season has started, then will, the focus will be on actual roadwork. The contract completion date is March, March 30th of 2024. We anticipate that the work should be done hopefully by November of 2023. However, we did want to include some additional time at the end of the contract outside of the next irrigation season in the event that we do need some additional time to address some of that work with the irrigation facilities. Once, once we do have more schedule details pinned down, we'll be doing a, a full media blitz here in regards to letting the public know what, what's going on in terms of the schedule for the project. So with that, I will turn it back over to the board and happy to answer any questions.
So Cody, just to reiterate, you had said something about $5.6 million, I believe? Was that what you thought it was going to cost originally? But now it, it will cost with the Avion 6.3, but it's still a lot less than what inflation came in last July?
$5.6 million was the total project estimated cost that we plugged into our five-year CIP. We prepared that, that estimate roughly a year ago in preparation for the fiscal year '23 budget.
So now it's only costing $700,000 more than that, that number from quite a while ago then?
Um, let's see. Yeah. Yeah. And, and, and noting that, that $200,000 of that is work that will be reimbursed to the county by Avion, it's, it's Avion Waterline work that we included in our construction contract.
Okay. Well, I think I was talking to Mr. Doty when, maybe to Nick, when we heard that we actually had some good news cost-wise. So significantly, almost $3 million less for this one bid.
Yeah, certainly, not just with this project, but, but several other projects we got here on the, fairly close on the horizon. We're glad to see construction prices, at least in terms of heavy civil construction stuff, somewhat stabilizing.
Do you feel like that, I mean, is that a, is that a sign that inflation is coming under control in, in this realm? Or, or just we had good competition, we, you know, and, and it worked out?
I'm not, I'm not enough of an economist really to fully answer that question. I, I do think that the, that having some good competition and just the, the present docket of work here in central Oregon, I think that, that did attribute something, coupled primarily with the, the decrease in fuel costs and asphalt oil costs that we're, we've been experiencing over the last four months or so.
And they must be projecting in the next, you know, next paving season, so that's the interesting thing.
Yes, and I, and I do also, I should note also, this is, this is the first project that we, the Road Department, have put out where we have included asphalt oil escalation and de-escalation in our contract, which, which possibly also has something to do with, with getting a little more favorable prices, at least on the paving work on the project. So with that, if the price of asphalt oil goes up, the contractors compensated more, but alternatively, if it goes down at the time, you know, between now and the time the work is actually occurs, then the price goes down as well. So, but that, that also provides some certainty to the contractor, that what he's going to get paid is tied to the price of asphalt oil the day he's doing the work, so.
But, but then, you know, we hold, we hold, we hold a little bit more uncertainty in our budgeting.
That is true.
They bid this, but it might be, you know, I, I mean, it's, 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 it's a very appropriate and fair, but like, I'm just trying to think about how that, how that affects, you know, our, our fiscal planning.
Certainly.
Interesting. One question I have, you know, as we know, there was, there's been a lot of community sensitivity around, you know, the Hunnel Road project, you know, and there are also, there's going to be other sensitivity on the very south end where, you know, Punches through to Cooley. Do you, how, how do you either screen contractors to, to know that they're able to deal with the kind of, like, delicate community relations issues in the areas where you're doing work? Or how do, how does the Road Department show up to be, you know, the outward-facing, you know, public engagement entity to handle things that come up?
I'll answer the second part of your question first. I mean, in, in general, the, the Road Department is, we actively are the forward-facing face of the project. We, we prefer that it's, you know, with adjacent property owners or other stakeholders, that it's, that it's us they're, they're talking to and dealing with and voicing concerns, not directly to the contractor. So, so one of several ways we do that is just with our inspection staff that's on-site, engaging with the work, the, basically the entire time, the contractor's workforce is on-site.
Right.
There, there's going to be components of this, where we'll probably have multiple inspectors out on-site at that point. We're, you know, other parts of that are through our public outreach, through our website, making sure, you know, as much information as we can make readily available is there, and whatever we can't get there, that it's pointing to Road Department contacts for folks to talk to, not, not the contractor directly necessarily. In terms of being able to screen contractors, so, so unless we were engaging in some type of alternative contracting, that's not really something we can do with the traditional competitive bid contracting under state law, so. And it's not really, that, that kind of public relations stuff isn't something that really factors into contractor qualifications under state law either. So there's, unless, unless we were doing something that, where we were engaging in a form of alternative contracting and included that in our selection criteria, that's not really something we can consider, unfortunately.
But, but, you know, if we're, if you're the, the buffer in between the, the operations and the public, then it, you know, maybe it doesn't, it's not, it's not, it's a non-issue. Thank you.
I did get a call from someone from Tumalo. They were dumping a whole bunch of building materials, et cetera, for regarding, you know, the Crickra, the roundabout there, and nobody let that neighborhood know, and they were dumping till, like, all night, and nobody in their family was sleeping. So it's, you know, public relations are really, they are important. That wasn't us, that was.
Yeah, not the more.
That was ODOT. But I definitely heard about it from that community, and I, you know, I don't blame them, because I would have thought they might have wanted to go somewhere else if they wanted to get their kids to sleep that night. Yeah, it was really unfortunate.
With that, I'll move approval of board chair signature of document number 2022-834, Notice of Intent to Award Contract for the Hunnel Road Loco Road to Tumalo Road Project.
Second.
Any further discussion? Commissioner DeBonne?
Yes.
Commissioner Chang?
Yes.
And the chair of votes, yes. Thanks for joining us today, Cody.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And nice to have the bid come in like it did.
Yeah. Pleasant surprise.
Okay, item number 13. Okay. I'm glad you work closely.
Yeah, I'm back, and I'm here on a different application. And I do actually have some extra maps that I printed out that I'll hand out to you guys right now. So this.
Thank you.
Thanks.
So this next item is, is a work session and discussion for a road name application. And so again, we're going to, we're going to plan to bring this back as a consent item next week, but this work session is to, to answer any questions, introduce the project, and, and discuss it. And so I'll give a quick, brief overview of kind of the road name process. It's a little bit different than some of our other land use files. And essentially, the road name application is, is approved and decided upon by planning staff at the staff level, but then the code requires that within a certain time of the staff decision becoming final, that the board adopts an order officially reassigning a name to that specific road. So this is, again, the work session in preparation for our consent next week. And so this particular application, I've got a map in your packet, and then additionally, this vicinity map. This application is specific to about a 1,600-foot-long segment of an existing 60-foot-wide public road that is, traverses through the West Gate and Tree Farm subdivisions on the west side of the City of Bend between city limits and Shovlin Park. And this particular application is requesting to rename this portion that's currently named Sage Step Drive and renaming it to McLean Drive. And the reason for this is McLean Drive, as you can see on that larger map, connects all the way up to the north, ultimately to Shovlin Park Drive. And so the, the intent is to keep the names consistent throughout the entire road segment. And the reason for the two different names was based on different dates that the subdivisions were platted. The portion to the south that's in Tree Farm was platted first, and so it built that roadway that did not connect to McLean. But then when West Gate was platted to the north, it completed that road connection, but the name was never, was never updated to be McLean. So that's kind of, again, the reason for the, for the request. As part of our processing of this application, notice was sent out to all adjacent owners abutting this section of road. We received no comments in opposition, in fact, received a few comments in support of the application. And also, no existing addresses will be affected. All the other, all the homes actually are addressed off of those perpendicular streets there, perpendicular to Sage Step and McLean. So again, no addresses will be affected. We didn't receive any concerns from the utility companies or any of the agencies that we notified as well. So that's sort of the, the overview of the project. Again, happy to answer questions, but just noting that this is in preparation to, for the board to approve this as a consent item next week.
It's kind of nice to have a segment with no address changes.
Yeah.
I mean, just acknowledging that upfront here. Well, and the connectivity of that area, you know, it is some big, big development steps have been taken in the west side transect. steps have been taken and the, the west side transect, uh, working its way out and the development happening. So that'd be a good connectivity. So you're going to be around about at Ridgeline Drive?
Not sure. I don't know.
A simple stop sign will do probably.
I have no questions about this.
Okay. Either drive.
Okay, great. Well, we'll, yeah, like I said, we'll bring this back, um, for, um, next week. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you for this map. Great job. Item 14.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Morning, Tanya.
For the record, Tanya Saltzman, Senior Planner. Um, I'm here today to discuss deliberations for psilocybin time, place, and manner, excuse me, text amendments. So I'm going to do a presentation that, um, basically goes over the same things that were provided in your memorandum. So first, it's an overview of the board process thus far, summary of the testimony, and then we'll dig into questions for deliberations, which, um, I've outlined in the memo as well as in a PowerPoint, and, um, we'll go from there. So one moment while I share this.
There it is.
All right. So first, a summary of the Board of County Commissioners process. Um, just as a quick reminder, I, uh, provided a summary of the planning commission process, which was the first phase of this, um, in the hearing for the Board of County Commissioners. So I won't go over that again. I'll, I'll spare you. Um, so the Board of County Commissioners held a public hearing on psilocybin text amendments on November 21st. That was continued to November 30th. We held the written record open until December 2nd at 4:00 PM. Um, we received a lot of written testimony, um, 60 written comments. And again, this is just for the board process, not planning commission, and 16 people participated in person. We also received seven written comments that were received after the close of the record. Um, I think I noted three or four of those in the memo, but a few more trickled in after that, and I'll, I'll circle back to that, um, in a moment. So a brief, well, sort of brief, um, summary of the written testimony received. Um, basically the main issue that people commented on was the possibility of service centers in destination resorts. That was kind of the, the primary thing. Um, so about, about 20 people testified against allowing service centers in destination resorts. And I will note that the numbers don't add up perfectly because some people talked about more than one issue. So it's not, don't do the math on that, but it is a general, a general accounting of kind of main concerns of the testimony. So I'll just touch on some of the things that, um, the testimony against allowing service centers in destination resorts, um, addressed. Um, people spoke for the, about the limited access to emergency services in the location. Um, most of these comments were directly from Pronghorn, uh, formerly known as Pronghorn, now known as Juniper Preserve, uh, specific property owners. Um, they cited a lack of transparency and community engagement between the resort ownership and the resort residents and property owners. This was a big one. Um, they kind of said that no one contacted them about any of this. They didn't really, they weren't really included in the loop there. Um, there was a concern for general safety of the residents and property owners. Uh, concerns about compatibility with Gulf and Family Residential Community, that the resort, uh, currently exists in that, uh, state essentially, a Gulf and Family Residential Community. Um, people noted that resort communities don't necessarily, uh, sorry, typo there, provide the peaceful role and quiet setting that the proponents desire. So a lot of what, um, you know, proponents of service centers and destination resorts, uh, cited is that it's, it's rural, it's nature-based, it's quiet, um, and that's really, um, helpful to the experience of a psilocybin administration session. Um, and some of this testimony said, eh, it's not actually quite that quiet. There's events, there's, um, shooting nearby, that type of thing. Um, some people said that the treatment, psilocybin treatment is more suited to medical facilities. And then there were concerns for loss of property values. About 27 people testified in favor of allowing service centers in destination resorts, um, for the following reasons. They said that service centers will be heavily regulated by the OHA, Oregon Health Authority, so the concerns for safety are unwarranted. Um, we'll note that OHA is still working on the rulemaking, but they do address things like emergency plans and kind of medical safety and things like that. Uh, destination resorts ensure a level of professionalism, security, and hospitable service to the public in general. Um, destination resorts are rural by nature. Juniper Preserve, which is formerly known as Pronghorn, will be focused on educating and informing the public about this treatment. Um, and then some testimony noted that service centers will be restricted to the commercial areas of a resort and that no person actively experiencing the effects of psilocybin may leave the licensed premises of the service center. And that's part of the OHA rules, the, where you actually have the treatment is, you know, confined to a certain space that has the license. Nine people said that the regulations in general are too restrictive. Um, there was support for psilocybin as a treatment in general for PTSD and trauma, um, a desire for this treatment from the veterans community. Um, some people noted that too many restrictions will result in fewer service centers and therefore give a little more pressure to make every treatment more expensive and longer wait lists because there will be fewer opportunities. Um, people noted that county residents have now voted twice in favor of psilocybin. Um, and then there was a request to allow service centers as a conditional use in EFU, Forest, MUA 10, and RA 10 zones, allow them as a conditional use as a community center to veterans, room and board facility, and guest ranch. And one comment was against psilocybin in general. Um, and just a quick note on the, the testimony that was received after the record. This is a list, um, of the people who did, um, respond. I will note that some of this testimony was also sent directly to the commissioners, so I'm sure the commissioners saw some of that. Um, and that's, you know, obviously citizens are allowed to communicate with the Board of County Commissioners as they wish, but it is, it should be noted that when the commissioners are making their decision today, they're only supposed to consider what's in the record. So I'm just putting that, that out there. Um, a lot of the testimony that was received after the record was, um, attempting to clarify some other testimony that was received from the Emerge Law Group, um, as well as test, uh, excuse me, clarifying their own testimony, just adding on to kind of their verbal testimony that they had already provided during the hearing. Um, there were also some concerns about the, um, the residency of some of the other people providing testimony. And that's all the detail. I'll go into those because they are not on the record. Um, the hearing testimony in person, excuse me, largely followed out of the written testimony as you would expect. Um, general support of psilocybin as a treatment option, um, the emphasis on nature and rural, nature-based and rural service centers, how important that is to the experience of having, um, a service center and having a psilocybin administration session. Um, again, reiterating that the voters have made clear that they want these services available in rural Deschutes County. Um, there were also some concerns for the ability of Oregon health authorities, uh, to regulate and enforce and kind of enforce all of these rules that they're making, um, just concerns that they bid off a little more than they can chew. Um, and a subsequent recommendation for the county to hold off on accepting any applications for psilocybin businesses for one year. Um, there was recommendation to adopt the planning commission recommendations, support for service centers and destination resorts. Um, there was a request for service centers in destination resorts to only allow indoor services. And then there were some comments against psilocybin in general. So it really ran the gamut, um, echoing a lot of the, the testimony that was received, um, written. So that's a summary of what occurred, um, over the last month. So now I'm going to dive into the questions for deliberation. Um, there's four kind of main, main areas, and then a couple of them get broken down into lots of sub areas that I'll hopefully be able to guide you through, um, clearly. So with that, first question is what hours should psilocybin service centers be permitted to operate? The planning commission recommended that the hours should match the OHA, um, which is 6:00 AM to 11:59 PM. There are provisions in, in, uh, the OAR for extenuating circumstances. If in a, if, excuse me, a facilitator believes this person, a person receiving treatment needs another hour or something like that, there's a process by which they can do so. They have to report back to OHA in the morning. So we wanted to allow that as, as part of this. Um, the planning commission recommended that and some testimony also supported this. So I will put this first, this first issue out to the commissioners, the options as we see it are to keep the hours as currently written in the package you received to match OHA, 6:00 AM to 11:59, or some other option.
I, I believe you told us that Hood River County was doing theirs from 8:00 AM to 5:00 PM. Is that not correct?
I believe that's correct.
I think that was in our.
Something, if not, then very, very close to that. Um, they were keeping theirs Monday through Friday about 8:00 to 5:00.
Now, is that, is that everywhere? Or is that, was that just in their EFU, uh, areas?
I'm not sure, and I could.
Because somewhere I wrote down that, that in Hood River County, they were allowing overnights in service centers in rural retail and commercial areas. And I may have, may, I may have mistakenly written that down, but.
I would have to refer back to the Hood River County, um, regulations. I don't know that off the top of my head, unless somebody.
Stephanie, can you address that? Or Peter?
Company?
Yeah, my team.
Yes, yes. Hello, Stephanie Marshall, Assistant Legal Counsel. I was actually going to run up to my office to get a copy of the Hood River ordinance, um, but it appears that maybe, uh, Mr. Gatawski has a copy right there on his laptop. Possibly, yes? Or I can run up to my office. That's where I was headed.
Yeah, thank you. Um, good morning, Madam Chair and members of the commission. Peter Gatawski, Community Development Director. I responded, I have an email from the 28th of November that the TPM amendments for Hood River are, um, as it pertains to operating hours, uh, are subject to certain business limitations in the EFU zone, are, are between 8:00 and 5:00, and there's other, other limitations to square footage. Regarding service centers limited to commercial zones, they have a, they have, and I don't know, they, they have a commercial zone, I suspect a rural commercial, and, uh, these may be rural, unincorporated. Um, they're subject to, um, let's see, they are limited commercial zones, and they're consistent with other commercial-related uses. I'm not aware, to the extent that those, I believe, to the extent that, that overnight accommodations are allowed in rural communities, uh, Hood River may be allowing over, overnight for service centers, um, uh, in those specific locations, um, given the comparable impacts. In Deschutes County, in Tumalo, in Terrebonne, um, in our rural, rural commercial zones, we don't have that makeup. We don't have overnight accommodations. And, uh, and, and that's largely due to the fact that we have significant infrastructure limitations in both communities. That's not to say that over time, if that, if sewer, uh, centralized sewer was established in those communities, like in Sun River, uh, you could, you could, uh, you could have overnight accommodations. But right now, uh, in our community, in those specific locations, infrastructure is a limiting factor. But in EFU, as Commissioner Chang was, uh, acknowledging that differentiation, there are, there are even more restrictive standards as it pertains to operating hours. The, 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 the size of an existing building or a new building can't exceed 800 square feet. So, um, as I look to Tanya and, and Stephanie, did I, I, does that align with your recollection?
That is.
Okay, okay.
So we do have, you know, in the, um, in the original, our original proposal for, areas where service centers would be allowed, uh, you know, there are, are initial proposed TPMs, there was, you know, Sun River Commercial District, Sun River Town Center were, uh, were listed. Um, so are those, those are places where overnight accommodations are allowed? Is that, is that correct?
I don't believe in the commercial zone. The commercial zone is the, is the Sun River, uh, kind of commercial district where you have the ice skating rink, you have retail uses, you have a grocery store, you have a few, I think there's Sun River breweries located there. So I'm not aware of overnight accommodations, uh, in that commercial s- sub-area of what we think of as Sun River proper.
So all of these commercial, rural commercial, rural service centers, Sun River Commercial District, Sun River Town Center, Terrebonne Commercial District, Tumalo Commercial District, currently there aren't overnight accommodations allowed in any of those areas?
I can't speak for Sun River Commercial. We could pull up the commercial.
That's what your, that's what your notes say. It says no overnight.
I defer to Tanya.
Well, but the, the proposal is for no overnight service centers, but whether, whether overnight accommodations of other kinds are currently allowed, um, is another, is, is the question I'm asking.
Aren't Sun River Town Center and Commercial District not in the destination overlay? Or it's not allowed in those, is my understanding?
Yeah, Commissioner, it's a different zoning construct. The Sun River is an urban unincorporated community. So you have commercial, you have commercial uses in the commercial zone of Sun River. Could, could the zone be amended to allow overnight? I'm sure it could. Does Sun River have the infrastructure, centralized water, centralized sewer to accommodate overnights? They do, um, as we know. Um, but in, as I mentioned, in, in the other er, zones that you just described, there are significant infrastructure limitations, which I think have informed those zones, um, upon their, you know, inception in the early 90s, which, uh, make it, uh, impossible to establish, again, because those, those regions are relying on decentralized, uh, wastewater system.
My understanding is that Sun River Commercial and Industrial or Village, whatever, those aren't even allowed for psilocybin though, the way this is written.
I would def, I, I, Tanya's aware of the, the audit that we did.
Sun River Commercial is where service centers wouldn't be allowed.
And we, and we.
Which is in the.
The Sun River was for, I believe, the.
Commercial or Town Center. Okay. Well, yeah.
Issues, uh, for the record, Will Groves, I had come up to your planning manager. Um, I had come up to.
Get everybody up here today.
I just had come up to note that the Sun River Town Center doesn't apply to any actual land. There was an effort, oh gosh, 10 years ago, to do a major overhaul of the Sun River Main Commercial Center and include hotels and really, um, make it a lot more, uh, resorty than it even is now, and that was never pushed forward. So we have a zone that's not applied to any land. So the Town Center does allow for hotels, but there is no land zoned that currently.
The designation that doesn't exist on, on the land. All right, so, um, then exploring whether we, we would want to be consistent with Hood River Counties, um, if they don't, if they don't allow overnight, if we don't have, if none of these areas have overnight accommodations anyway, then, you know, that, that's moot. I won't worry about it. So that, I, you know, 6:00 to 11:59 seems appropriate to me.
And I support aligning with Oregon Health Authority rules.
Are the rules out yet? I thought, Tanya, that you said that they're not out yet.
There's still, I mean, some of them, they've been doing it.
Maybe proposed, yeah.
At the end of the year. Um, I believe the public comment period for the last wave ended on the 21st of November. Um, and so they're brewing those up right now, I believe, but I haven't seen anything yet. But any day now.
Well, yeah, I mean, to be more clear, you know, aligning with OHA's approved hours, even if they change, so that, that would be my, my position.
So shall we continue, or so is that acceptable, that align with OHA hours? Or another option?
I want to see where we're going. So, yeah, I would go ahead, but.
And I mean, also keeping in mind that, uh, if we effectively make the places where you can have service centers nothing, then the ma, the hours don't matter.
Well, these are hours for anywhere that could be approved in the county. This is a blanket statement for all, any operation.
That's right. But the, the areas, uh, originally proposed in, in, you know, in the, in the proposed TPMs, uh, essentially there's almost no properties that, uh, that would be eligible.
Okay. Um, I will move on to the next one. Yeah. Uh, this concerns manufacturing, um, which essentially is, uh, This concerns manufacturing, which essentially is growing and processing of psilocybin-producing fungi. So, the question at hand is, should psilocybin manufacturing as a farm and processing use be allowed in forest zones, which is F-one and F-two, in addition to EFU? Planning Commission recommendation was to allow it in the forest zones. ORS four seventy-five A, five seventy-four states that a county may allow the manufacture of psilocybin products as a farm use on land zoned for farm or forest use in the same manner as the manufacture of psilocybin products is allowed in EFU zones. It is considered a farm crop, so by default, it is, you have to allow the manufacture of it in EFU land. This is just allowing it to be extended a little bit more, in this case, into the forest zones. There was some testimony suggesting that, and the Planning Commission decided to recommend allowing the growing and processing of psilocybin in forest zones.
And that's going beyond what the state has?
Sorry?
That's going beyond what the state has?
Well, the, the state statute allows counties to allow it, essentially. The EFU is kind of the baseline, and then they're also allowed to permit the manufacturing in other, other areas that allow for farm, farm use.
Okay, and this would be in a building, then?
Yeah, it all has to be indoors by OHA rules. General, our general understanding is that it's quite small, and they have, you know, physically the space that's needed. Yeah. So, the options are to uphold that Planning Commission recommendation, allowing it in forest zones, or not to allow it in forest zones.
The, the way that I see this is if this is something that is blanket authorized in EFU, it's not fair to not allow it in F-one as well. I mean, the, they're pretty similar, consistent intention-type zones. And, and both to people who are, who see it as an opportunity to produce psilocybin. It's unfair to allow one, essentially agricultural production zone, this opportunity, and not another. And on the flip side, to people who are concerned about psilocybin production being next door to them, on the, on, on EFU property, you know, I, the more places where psilocybin production is avail, is, is allowed, the less likely that psilocybin production is going to end up next door to you. So, it's unfair to both people who are interested in production and who don't want to see production next door to them to only have psilocybin production allowed in EFU.
I'm supportive of upholding the Planning Commission's recommendation of, of allowing it in the forest zones.
Has any other county in the state allowed it in the forest zone? What's Hood River done?
They spoke mostly to service centers and what we were looking at.
Excellent question, Chair Derr. To my knowledge, those that are establishing time, place, and manner regulations, which would be Jackson County, Hood River County, and Wasco County, are limiting production to EFU and those zones that have some type of retail component. So, the only rural area that, where production's allowed is, I should take that back. My understanding is the only area where production is allowed is EFU. Jackson County, I think Wasco County has taken that approach. Hood River County has taken that approach. Jackson County has not. They were the most restrictive. They had the most restrictive time, place, and manner.
Jackson County does.
Jackson County does, yeah. Now, there are a number of other counties that have, have not developed time, place...
None of them allow in EFU, but Jackson is even more restrictive than the others?
Let me, let me rephrase.
Sorry, none of them allow in F-one, but Jackson County is even more restrictive than the others?
Correct, yep. Yeah, but there are other, a number of other counties where psilocybin is, is going to be permissible in the new year, but they're not updating their codes. They're going to rely on their existing zoning construct. And so, that's not directly to your question, Commissioner Derr, but I can imagine, you know, forest use zones allow farm use to be, as outright permitted use. So, under, one would assume that if there are property owners with that zoning designation, that they could grow psilocybin in that forest, forest use zone. So, there's two different approaches that counties are taking. Those that have time, place, and manner amendments, which are just a handful, and those other counties that didn't opt out or didn't consider an opt-out, and they're going to rely on their, their existing zoning construct or zoning program.
And, and so, in those counties that aren't specifying, it will, psilocybin production will be allowed in F, forest zones?
I would presume so, because in forest use zones, farm use is a use permitted outright.
Okay. So, do we want to go on to three, then?
So, is the consensus to allow in forest zones?
There's two votes for it.
I support that.
Making sure I have my notes correct. All right, so, I don't remember three. Should, sorry. Should psilocybin service centers be allowed in destination resorts? And as I've noted, this is the thing that has kind of generated the most attention in this, in this phase of the process. I have a few slides on this. So, the Planning Commission recommendation was to allow it in destination resorts? There's three options, well, three first options, and then there's kind of a second tier of options, depending on what option is chosen personally. Hopefully, it's clear. It's a little confusing, but I'll try to make it as clear as possible. So, the first tier of options are to not allow service centers in destination resorts. To allow them in destination resorts, it also allows manufacturing as an accessory use if it's in conjunction with the service center. That's kind of the baseline of, of allowing it. Or to allow it in that same capacity, but as a conditional use. And I'll just go into this a little bit further next. So, concerning not allowing service centers into destination resorts. As I noted earlier, about a third of the testimony was against allowing them in destination resorts. And as I also noted, there were a significant amount of comments concerning the lack of transparency and outreach from the resort to the property owners and the residents. And again, this is not a county issue, per se, but it is the, the optics of it, and we do feel it's necessary to note that to the board, of course. No other comments were received from the other three destination resorts in the county. We just don't know if that's, was not on their radar or what have you, but this would ultimately, in theory, affect them as well, or could. One option, if the board decides to not allow service centers in destination resorts, the board could consider adopting TPMs today or next week, without the destination resort provisions in it now. And then, those proponents of having it in destination resorts, whether it's the representation that's already provided testimony or some other party, they could apply for a legislative text amendment to do so in the future. So, that would be kind of, they would carry that weight. It doesn't involve a separate fee and a process, but they could hone in on exactly what they want and produce findings accordingly. So, that is an option. And key to that would be notification to all destination resort property owners. So, that way, people would be a little bit more in the loop concerning the process, because that was, that was an issue that, that arose. I don't know if...
So, you're saying it wouldn't cost them anything more? But they could go for a conditional?
It would. If they, if, if, if the board chose not to address destination resorts right now and left it to the destination resorts or whoever to apply for their own legislative text amendment, they are, they are paying that fee, they are, you know, preparing all of the documents and kind of hiring the lawyers and all of that. So, it does entail time and money. There's no doubt about that. But it doesn't, if the board chooses to not allow them right now, it doesn't mean that that door is completely shut. It could be...
That's with option C.
Come up from the source, is, is kind of what we're saying. And that would maybe, maybe give an opportunity for a process where there's a little bit more communication and just outreach in terms of what, what these options are. And that's just, just a suggestion. It's not, it's not to say that they have to do that, but there, that is an avenue that they could choose to pursue.
And just to provide a little more context on, on that option, the Community Development Department would notify all property owners in destination resorts of this propos, under this scenario. If, if a destination resort representative applied for a legislative amendment to include psilocybin service centers as part of the resort's commercial portfolio, commercial, commercial lands portfolio, we would be obligated to send notice to every resident who own, a property owner, who, who owns property in, in any one of our four destination resorts to, to ensure that they were made aware of this type of land use. We've done this in the past. It's, it's, it's a common practice. It's, it's deference afforded to the planning director. So, that's why that last sentence there says notification, notification could be, could be then sent to all destination resort property owners. That's how that process would function.
Okay, and you're saying, even if they don't live there, they would be notified?
If they own property, if they haven't built a residence...
They had a house there.
If they didn't have a house there and their address was somewhere else, they would get notification of, of this opportunity that's being presented by an applicant from, as, from a destination resort representative. Of course, if they had a residence, that residence, they may be living there full-time, but it also may be a second home, in which case, the address on file may be somewhere else. They would still, whatever address we have on file with the assessors is where they would receive notification. But Tanya's point is well said. Whatever options the board chooses, and to the extent that they are limiting in, on rural lands, potentially on destination resorts, as you've heard me say more than once over the course of this public process, it doesn't mean that the industry can't be an applicant going forward to amend county code. And this could be true in Jackson County, it could be true in Wasco County, in Hood River County, to, to demonstrate how this use aligns with the existing comprehensive plan policies and rural land use pattern to show that it's a compatible use. As, I, I just think it's important for anybody who's here in person or listening online that, that the Community Development Department and the board, also, as well, were in a very reactionary position this, this past year in the way that the psilocybin regulations were ultimately developed by the Oregon Health Service. So, counties have been reactionary, and they're, they're, it ultimately meant that there was not real opportunity to have robust community dialogue. And so, in our case, we've done the best we can, based on the direction from the board in the summer, to ensure that the Planning Commission had as much time as possible. They had two hearings, and of course, the board also had two hearings. So, an imperfect process, but I think that the point I'm trying to get, get across is if, to the extent that one finds that there are certain limitations in what the county ultimately adopts, it doesn't mean that the industry or the advocates can't come forward with an application to amend the code based on the circumstances that they see that are appropriate for service centers. So, it's, the process remains dynamic, and that's true for any land use in, in rural Deschutes County. You know, if our codes, our codes are seen as restrictive, one can ultimately amend those codes, consistent with state law and, and of course, our comprehensive plan.
So, what we're talking about, then, is actually option three, C?
That's just putting it in, in context.
Okay, all right.
All right, so, thank you, Peter. That's super helpful. So, this is, yeah, just kind of giving context to option A of not allowing service centers in destination resorts, and at this decision point. Option B and C are to allow service centers in destination resorts, either as a conditional use or, or not as a conditional use. And we'll note, a conditional use, in that process, the applicant has to demonstrate that the use is compatible with the existing and projected uses on the surrounding properties. They look at things like site design, operating character, use, adequacy of transportation, natural and physical features of the site. I will note that, right now, where the service centers are proposed in the kind of commercial retail area, separate from destination resorts, those are also conditional uses. So, that does put a little bit more, some more guardrails on that process, as it were, if, if they were allowed as a conditional use. So, those are two options. And then, so basically, the first tier of decisions, I'll go back to that slide, is to not allow, to allow, or to allow as a conditional use.
So, get some information out here. I'm supportive of allowing it in the servants, service centers and destination resorts. You know, the big picture here is, this has been voted on twice. And during, you know, this last year, when we did put it on the ballot, I wanted people to get engaged. I want, I, we need people to understand this is the discussion. It's the community discussion. We got to vote on it the second time, and it was all about land use at that point in time. You know, when it comes to psilocybin specifically, I'm not here to advocate for recreational use. We're talking about managed, safe, and approved environment. So, I'm not opposed to allowing in the destination resort areas. And when it comes to manufacturing, I'm envisioning a, you know, a small, like a refrigerator-sized environment for growing it if it was in a co-located office. It's shocking for people that have, you know, invested in for the residential opportunities at a destination resort. So, it's going to be a rocky road in the future, but I'm just setting direction to where I'm at at this point.
So, you're saying B?
Mm-hmm.
And I'm saying C.
I'm gonna, it's, it's pretty hard for me to weigh in on this item before we go to question four. Because I'm, I'm trying to look at it at the, at the ninety thousand-foot level. The voters of Deschutes County have said twice that they want access to psilocybin services across the county, both, both the urban, urban voting precincts and the rural precincts. And the commercial district and service center approach provides almost no opportunities for psilocybin service centers. So, for me, the concern is, the people have said they want access. Our initial proposal offered almost no access. Destination resorts is one way to expand access. And then, the fourth question, you know, EFU, is another way to expand access. And, and my preference would be, well, in the ideal world, I think, I, I would, I would support access in both of those types of, of settings. But if push comes to shove, my priority is going to be the EFU areas over the destination resorts, because I think that will provide more access to more people locally than destination resort opportunities. So, I, I, I don't, I actually don't know how to weigh in on question three before we discuss question four.
Yeah, it's, that's understandable, because they are, they are related. Would it be helpful to, to temporarily table this one and go to item four and discuss?
Sure.
And then come back? And then, we can also address the second tier of destination resort questions once that part gets determined. So... Okay, question number four is, should psilocybin service centers be prohibited as home occupations or as commercial activities in conjunction with farm use? Planning recommendation was to not, do, do not, excuse me, prohibit these two paths. And I'll go into a little bit of explanation now. As, as staff has noted to the board and to the Planning Commission in the past, we are, we received interpretation from DLCD, Department of Land Conservation and Development, in concert with the Department of Justice. They interpreted the statute as allowing services, not as a, service centers, not as a standalone use on EFU land, but through these two potential paths. One is a commercial activity in conjunction with a farm use. paths. One is a commercial activity in conjunction with the farm use and the other is a home occupation. These are already things that exist in code and they would kind of, a service center would roll up into either one of these paths. And each one has their own criteria, their own processes. Um, and certainly, if there are specific questions about how those processes work, what the kind of guardrails and criteria are, we can answer those questions. Um, so that was the DLCD interpretation. We've been kind of upholding that and, and going with that. Um, we know that not, I believe Hood River has decided not to, um, go with that interpretation, if I'm correct, right?
Mm-hmm.
Um, and then, we received testimony from Thousand Friends of Oregon, um, which is in the record concerning both of these uses, and they recommended prohibition of both of these uses. Um, and the testimony is provided at length in the record, but I've provided a brief summary here. Concerning home occupations, they noted the conflict between, uh, the need to use a dwelling and associated buildings for home occupation, but also there's the exclusion of the primary residence for service centers in, uh, the ORS that talks about psilocybin. Um, they noted the draft rules, which again are not, not set in stone yet, but usually if they're kind of in the draft, they're, they're going that direction, prohibiting overlapping space with bed and breakfasts or residences. Um, so they just noted that there might be some potential conflicts and, um, with those home occupations. Um, concerning commercial activity in conjunction with farm use, um, and we've touched on this as we've kind of tossed this around internally, um, the commercial activity has to enhance the farming enterprises of the local agricultural community to which the EFU land hosting that commercial activity relates. Um, so it has to have that direct, um, relationship. They just noted that. And then they noted the incidental and subordinate requirement. The commercial activity has to be incidental and subordinate to the farm use. So they were saying that the service centers, that money that generated from the service centered would rapidly eclipse that of the manufacturing that is on that property. This is, this is just their, their, their take on things. Um, they also had a general policy consideration about agricultural land as a whole, just saying, they said that service centers are most similar to a medical, medical clinic in their view, without a need to use the county's quote valuable and shrinking farmland. So they were just saying that in general, they believe that service centers are, are not an appropriate use on EFU land and they're better left sighted elsewhere. Um, so that's kind of another, another aspect of, of the consideration of whether to allow, to keep these two paths open, to allow as a home occupation or a commercial activity in conjunction with farm use. This doesn't mean that an applicant is guaranteed to do that. They have to meet all of this criteria, um, but this is another take on it. Um, so with that, those options are to keep the amendments as written, which maintains those, those pathways. Those are open. Home occupations and commercial activities in conjunction with farm use. This is as a way that service centers could be on EFU land. Um, the Board could choose to prohibit them and, as both of those two uses, or some sort of hybrid of the two, either prohibit one, prohibit the other, or prescribe additional TPMs that are specific to service centers as they appear in these two uses. Um, so if there's, uh, more specific than just the general TPM. That's a lot of words. I'll stop talking.
And, uh, the Hood River model is actually even a fourth option? I mean, that's, it's not captured by A, B, or C here. Is, is that correct?
We, I mean, we did not receive any testimony in the record specific to Hood River. Um, so we didn't go down that road, but we're happy to discuss it.
I, I would add that I think if you, if you approach the Hood River County approach with a conditional use permit, limiting hours of operation, I think you're, you're gonna be sub- the, the, the amendments may be subject to, to appeal, um, and maybe, may be litigated, uh, in light of, um, Thousand Friends testimony. So, I mean, uh, not to single out Thousand Friends, but anyone who has standing can, can challenge the adoption of, of the Board of County Commissioners', um, adoption of the psilocybin amendments. But I think the, the EFU, if you, if you, the Board approaches EFU as, if, if the Board approaches psilocybin uses in EFU as a standalone use subject to conditional use provisions, um, uh, you just, it's important, I think, to put on record that, that, that provision could, could be vulnerable to, uh, litigation, whether at the time of our amendments or with an applicant, uh, trying to utilize those amendments to get an entitlement.
I, I guess with the severe restrictions or, not severe, but the, with the restrictions on operating hours and the square footage, I just, um, I think that reasonable people would, uh, think that, that the, the opportunity had been constrained enough that they wouldn't see a need to challenge it, but people like to, people like to litigate.
Uh, once again, I support the amendments as proposed, uh, supporting either home occupations or commercial activities as a possible path, 'cause it, once again, there's still a lot of variables in there. And, and then when we, when we talk about resource lands like this, uh, you know, we've, we've got a lot of history, you know, from rural wedding events to farm dinners and farm stands and just trying to sell your pumpkins from your field at a farm stand. Uh, you know, high desert land use is a lot different than, uh, the valley, you know, when, when, um, you know, land use advocacy comes in and says, we need to protect that high-value farmland. The high desert is just a whole different world. Uh, and then in support of opportunities on private property, I, I just start to go right down that path.
Given, given what we've learned about how complicated it would be to, uh, do a service center as a home occup- home occupation, you know, in association with a home occupation or a commercial activity. Anyway, I, I, I don't see any reason to try to further restrict that, so I would support option A. And I think that was a, I think that Commissioner Dubon was saying he supported option A. I would support option A as well.
So those are our four options then?
Those are the four, um, but we should circle back to option three now to talk about destination resorts.
Okay.
Back up in my thing here. Okay. So, going back to destination resorts, the first set of options are, don't allow them in destination resorts, allow them, or allow them as a conditional use. And just as a spoiler alert, the next, the next set of, um, options has to do with the language of, um, if the Board chooses to allow them, um, playing with the, the language there. And you've seen that in the memo, but, but the first option is just, or the first set of options is to decide whether to allow or not, and with a conditional use or not. I don't know if there are any questions specific to the conditional use aspect or not, or?
So, under option B, uh, allowing them as opposed to allowing them as a conditional use, um, uh, under option B, how do the, um, how do, how does the, the debate between destination resort, uh, homeowners, you know, in the residential portion of the destination resort, and the, um, the ownership of the commercial component, how, you know, what are, how do those things, how do those issues get sorted out? I mean, if, if you, um, pursued the conditional use scenario, like I know that we have a process for, you know, the neighboring, uh, residential, um, owners within the, you know, the members of, of a destination resort to, um, challenge and question and kind of, you know, get, um, assurances about certain things through the conditional use process. But if it's happening outside of a conditional use, our, our, our land use planning process, you know, how does that work? Uh, how does, how do they work it out inside a destination resort?
I see Will grows our planning.
Thank you, Will.
So, uh, these would be, in either case, they'd be subject to site plan review. So there would be a land use application and we'd be making sure that there was, for example, adequate parking, um, you know, that the, uh, trash areas were screened, the sort of general things we do when anybody opens up a commercial site. The, the notion is, is that if it's allowed under option B, that the use is presumed to be compatible with surrounding uses. So, you know, there's some question about specifically how you lay it out, but general, but generally, it's been assumed at that point that this is something that should go in the zone. So for example, in a commercial zone, if you, you know, if you say, hey, um, you know, this is someplace that allows banks and hair cutting salons and all that kind of stuff, they're assumed to all match at the outset. When you make something a conditional use, you're saying this might be okay in this area, but we want to have an extra safety check. And that comes from, uh, county code 18128115, and it talks about the, the site being suitable with relationship to both the uses on the site itself and with surrounding uses. And those things are typically limited to things that have, you know, real impacts to off-site uses. So if you had, uh, if you were uncertain about, you know, what this use might look like, and that's one of the things that we've struggled with, um, you would have an opportunity to check for traffic, noise, odor, um, visual impacts. You know, as described by the applicants for this, it seems like those things generally wouldn't be concerns as, you know, as has been represented by proponents of it. But it does, uh, it does provide both neighbors and the, ultimately the Board, if appealed to the Board, significant discretion to think about compatibility broadly under option C, whereas under option B, you're presuming that it's compatible and you're just making sure mostly the parking's right.
But under option B, it doesn't mean that there's no mechanisms for, um, a member of homeowners and, you know, the owner of the commercial component to work stuff out offline. I mean, it just means that they're not doing it in our, um, you know, through a conditional use process.
I see your question. So certainly, you know, these, uh, destination resorts have extensive CCNRs. And I, I'm not sure how each of them operate and to what extent the homeowners have control or effectively veto power over uses that might happen in a commercial center. Given that these are set up by the resorts generally, I would imagine that the, that that's not happening at a homeowner level, but it would probably be down to per resort, per their CCNRs, what their internal management process is for that. But presumably, they have some structure that determines, you know, how commercial uses are allowed or not allowed per resort in the CCNRs.
And that's not something that the, the county gets involved in. That's a private contract, so important to put that on the record. I think if to the, to, to the extent that the Board is, is contemplative of option B, the Board would be, as, what the applicants are essentially, the applicants, the, the testimony by Juniper Preserve and their, their council is that the Board would be making a finding today with this amendment that service centers are compatible. Um, and, and therefore, what they would, as Will articulated, then if, 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 if the amendments are incorporated into the ordinance and acknowledged, then at such time that the, the Board, that the destination resort representatives could come forward with a site plan. And as Will noted, that's very limited. It's parking, it's access and egress and whatnot. The compatibility piece, which is part of a conditional use process, that's not part of the analysis. Could, could concerned, uh, commercial tenants or owners or homeowners, uh, engage in a site plan process? They could, but the criteria that they would be relying upon don't speak to compatibility. And so what's before you as you contemplate all of these options, if, if you're aligned with, with B, that understand that you will essentially be, per, per the request of the, of the resort representatives, that, you know, that, that you believe it's, or find that this use is, is similar in, in other commercial uses that are acknowledged in the master plans of each of the four resorts, that those are supportive services, they're retail-based, um, and then that, that will inform subsequent processes, um, if and when a destination resort decides that they want to apply and title a service center in these specific areas.
I think it boils down to the scenario of, you know, a, a person walking into a building, getting, receiving services and walking out of a building. That's like getting a hamburger. Or going to an outdoor facility that's, you know, controlled in some fashion. So I'm referring to indoor/outdoor here at this point. So I know it's been, there's a lot of testimony says, you know, an outdoor experience in a rural area is, is, would be preferred, but, you know, during a treatment, is there, is there an outdoor function? 'Cause that would be the big difference between a person walking into a front door and walking out of that door. Um, so, and we're not, you know, we're not defining all that today, but that's what I think of. You know, would it be a gated outdoor area or a starry sky opportunity? I don't know.
And we're, we're not dealing with indoor/outdoor at destination resorts today. Is that, is that correct?
Well, an outdoor pool or an indoor pool.
Questions?
The OHA has, um, I believe they're either draft rules or rules, rules at this point, but they do allow for, they have specific rules concerning the outdoor aspect of things, saying that it needs to be very clearly delineated. It needs to have a, you know, some sort of border, that kind of thing for safety, so that that can't bleed into-
Yep. Yeah. And I haven't studied all those rules, but as I say, I would, you know, if, if this is a statewide effort, Oregon Health Authority is working hard on this. That's where those definitions or, or controls would come from.
Actually, considering the number of people that we heard from that did find out about this, I, um, feel like C on item three is a better option, just-
With a conditional use.
Yes. Just because, um, a lot of them weren't aware that we weren't supposed to read. So, yes. But we did hear from some that, you know, I just, um, it seemed like the neighbors out there needed to know.
My, my, my ultimate goal, uh, my ultimate goal is for, um, homeowners in destination resorts and management and owners, you know, commercial owners in destination resorts to work stuff out offline. Um, but I, I'm actually seeing how, I, I can, I'm playing out scenarios in my head about how both option B and option C leave opportunities for that and, um, encourage it. I mean, you know, if you come in with a, you know, with a conditional use application, you wanna, you wanna do your homework with the neighbors. Um, and similarly with, with option B, if you, uh, if you only are subject to site plan review, um, yeah, it means your, your neighbors wanna, wanna make sure that they have talked to you about what you're proposing before, before it moves forward. So, um, I, um, I, I could go either way on, on, on this, on this question. Um, yeah, maybe I'll, I, I would lean towards B. And, and, I mean, does, will the next tier of questions kind of potentially change the way we think about B or C here?
Probably not. I mean, uh, it's more the specific, uh, rules of, um, the determination of how it's, well, we can just go to it and then come back again if that is-
Well, so today's deliberation's trying to finalize a package that, uh, and we know that if it isn't a unanimous, uh, adoption, emergency adoption by unanimous vote, it kind of goes off the rail at this point, so. And we could see this coming for a while, maybe. We didn't know where it was gonna go.
If it's not adopted by emergency, then there will be, it does take 90 days to become effective. Um, so for whenever that second reading is, it has to be at least 14 days after the first reading. So if that, depending on how the Board's schedule shakes out, you know, we're looking at March or something like that. So there will be a, if it's non, non-emergency, there will be a period where there are not yet TPM in place. And this, um, you know, Peter and Will have discussed kind of what this means. Certain counties, that's the direction they're going, period. Um, where, but in our case, um, an applicant would have to use a similar use scenario, which, you know, has a lot more, um, volatility, I would say. It could go, you know, really in their favor or really not in their favor. It's just a little more, um, a little more limbo. And we can talk to the specifics of that, um, as needed. But yeah, it is, it doesn't mean if it's a non-emergency that it won't get adopted. There just will be, it will be a delay and there would be kind of this, um, 90-day period of-
I mean, that's just for us.
Yeah.
That's, that's where we're at.
So would it be helpful for me to go to the little, the second tier and then come back? I'm happy to do so. Yeah, it's, it's all nested together, so I completely, yeah. All right. So, the second tier here, if the Board decides to allow service centers in destination resorts, options B or C, which it seems like this is the direction. Um, I'll note that we received, uh, a couple of batches of testimony from MSLCO and the Emerged Law Group who represents, uh, Juniper Preserve, uh, suggesting that the service center would not be subject to a master plan modification if the service center is proposed in any area approved for, and this is their words, "a spa, physical fitness center or other use deemed by the planning director to enhance a person's wellness." So in other words, that would, the onus would be on, on the planning director, this guy, um, to determine if, if that service center, uh, is compatible and is a wellness use. Um, staff proposes a, a poss- Um, staff proposes a possibly less ambiguous option, um, that doesn't rely on the planner, planning director's discretion. Um, it would read the establishment of psilocybin service center in any area approved for commercial services or special, specialty shops. And that is the category of use within the destination resort code that this would fall into. So in other words, if it's in this area that's approved for commercial activities and there's a whole list of uses, um, then that would be, that would be it. The planning director would not have to make this decision. Yes, that's wellness or it's not wellness or takes it away from one specific person. So there's, those are two options, and this is where it gets a little confusing. Um, so these additional options, D, E, and F. So there's the choice to adopt the language, that first thing with the wellness planning director determination. There's option E, which is, uh, the staff suggestion of changing it to just being a commercial, um, service. Or option F is to go back to the original, um, version that was in the hearings packet, which, um, did have some ambiguities concerning if it would be necessary to modify the conceptual master plan or final master plan. And that was kind of what, what, um, was the, the basis for Macealco providing that additional testimony to provide clarification. So F is sort of the most ambiguous. Um, it would be unclear if there would be, have to be a modification to the, the master plan. Uh, D and E are two different ways of trying to get at that, um, that ambiguity. Is that super confusing? Sorry. Um, so it's.
Tree of choices.
It's a tree. It is a tree.
If I might.
Yes, please.
So, you know, there's a top-level choice, which is, you know, to allow, conditionally allow or to allow subject only to site plan. And that's, you know, you guys have worked your way through that pretty effectively. This is a minor language tweak below any of the allow options. And, um, the way that the original version of the language wa, it was, uh, proposed back when we were in front of the planning commission, left a deep ambiguity about the relationship between this use and the master plan that was going to be relatively complicated for an applicant to work their way through. Um, because master plans are approved against a set of allowed uses, you know, you can, you know, and commercial centers and destination resorts, you can buy golf clubs, you can get your haircut, you can get a sandwich, right? The usual stuff you'd expect in a, a resort commercial setting. Because this is being added to that list of uses, there's a question of, does it automatically update to the u, list of uses that a resort can have? Or do they have to go through a relatively significant master plan revision to bring this in? And so to address that problem, uh, the, the testimony from, uh, from the proponents for destination resort uses said, let's make it clear that this thing is automatically a member of the uses. You know, it's, it's like the other uses in the commercial center. And you don't have to go back to the master plan. So areas that are currently allowed for, uh, getting your haircut or buying some golf clubs or getting a sandwich, that's now also a place where psilocybin service centers could go without having to open up the whole destination resort, uh, main book. We thought that, that seems like, to the extent the board wanted to entertain it, that seems like a reasonable approach. We had a minor language tweak, which was, that said, anywhere that's currently designated for that type of use is an acceptable place for a psilocybin service center. And we were overriding the, uh, the resort's proposed text, making it more permissive because their version of it had a planning director check to say, if there was spa wellness, then this is like spa wellness, therefore you can have psilocybin service center. It produced a kind of a confusing ambiguity. Um, we found situations where the planning director makes determinations. We've run into problems with those because it's unclear how that works in the process. So, uh, we, the staff recommended change to that, tidies up the language in a way that we think it, um, makes it more clear and, uh, and roughly the same level of permissiveness. Maybe slightly more permissive under the staff version of it.
But more clear.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you, Will.
Sorry. I don't know if that helped at all.
Stephanie Marshall, Assistant Legal Counsel, I thought I'd weigh in also. Um, how this relates to the discussion that we were just having of site plan review or conditional use permit review. You know, I mean, it sounds like the board is like, yeah, we, we don't need to go through, like, is this compatible? So, so this is kind of, again, kind of falling into that, that, um, site plan review type of, uh, it's, it's a permissible use as long as you get that site plan and you go through and, and you have parking, landscaping, you know, entrance, exit, that kind of a thing. So, um, if we're, if we're looking at, um, essentially avoiding the uncertainty that would be under option F here, um, you know, you're, to be consistent, I guess, is what I'm saying, is, um, you know, if you're not gonna have them go through and, and modify the approved, um, master plan, uh, to essentially go through that exercise once more of consistency and whatnot. They're, they're absolutely separate inquiries, but they're also related to that idea of whether you're looking at, um, making a case. If the applicant, uh, destination resort is looking to make the case of compatibility and to what degree, um, we're gonna ask them to do that. So maybe that makes it a little bit more clear.
Absolutely affects my choice between B and C. Even though I, I agree that they're separate processes.
Right. They are absolutely separate processes. They're, they're separate inquiries, but they are related in, in, in what the overall ask is or the overall consideration is.
Yeah, level of scrutiny. Thank you.
I, um, you know, I'm in, uh, I, I, I don't want to make someone go through a, a master plan amendment process to, to, to have access to this opportunity. And I, 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 my leaning would be, uh, the, towards the staff recommended language.
And I can get there too with all, I mean, I, I thought I studied it, but now I was like, oh, interesting. This is even more clarity though, is the value. So I, I agree.
So you're saying F then, without the revisions?
E. Um, E is with, so the, so D and E are the ones to, that remove the ambiguity of the master plan modification. And then between D and E, it's whether it's the planning director's call or if it just falls into that overall commercial category within the destination resort code. So I believe Commissioners Chang and Debon.
Yeah, I would be hesitant to support a planning director call on that just cause it looks different over time. You know, even if the best intention is this is what we mean, 10 years from now, it's like, well, no, it's not. Obviously it's not what they meant. So that, I agree with the updated text.
So that looks like option E.
And then I'll go back to.
Yeah.
I'll go back, I'll go back to B, C, and I, I, I'm leaning towards C.
And I agree with that.
As a conditional use.
Yeah. Provide, we, we wanna provide lots of clarity and, you know, make our, our processes not, not, not too cumbersome. You know, that's the, that's the E choice. And then, you know, C does invite that, that process. I mean, it encourages that process of, of applicants working stuff out with their neighbors before they come in with their application.
So you're both going back to C then? Three C?
Is S.
C is the conditional use option, allowing it subject to a conditional use.
I'm not clearing in. Um, so if we go to that, the D seven with the updated language, is that assuming C?
Oh, sorry. We, I thought that that was resolved as.
E.
As.
E.
E. Option E with the staff, um, the staff recommendations of.
And I was referring, yeah. Yeah, so I'm sorry. Hopefully, hopefully we're gonna get there.
But the D E, the D, D or E choice.
Yeah, no, I guess I'm looking at different, different A, B, and C, sorry.
With either B or C.
Say that again.
You would be choosing between D and E, whether you said yes to B or yes to C anyway.
Correct.
So.
So, going back to D, E, and F, is the consensus, I understand what I'm hearing is E. So with the, without, uh, without the wellness determination with the staff modification saying.
Yes.
Okay.
As long as we're doing three C, oh, yes.
And then rolling back, yeah, going back is a, allowing it in destination, allowing service centers in destination resorts as a conditional use. Yes?
I support that too. That's fine.
That's option C.
C.
Okay. I think we have it.
Can we review what?
Yes, I would love that.
From the top, we, we've got.
I will also note, sorry, um, let me just continue on that destination resort for one thing. Staff has also recommended, uh, that now that the board, uh, would like to allow it in destination resorts, is, is decoupling it into two different ordinances and having the destination resort part as a separate ordinance in the case of any appeal. So that way, the TPM, the baseline TPM, all the other stuff would, as long as that is not appealed, remain kind of in place and, and humming along. Um, so it just allows a little bit more flexibility.
So legal is recommending that?
Well, legal has been asked to weigh in on this. Um, this is staff's recommendation to the board. Um, but, but from a legal standpoint, what decoupling would do is, um, if you had a challenge and, and the challenge was basically primarily to the destination resort aspect, which would be what, what, what staff is recommending is have that be a separate ordinance. That way, if, uh, if, if and when a challenge comes in, you still, you're, the baseline TPM regulations are not affected by an appeal to the, um, the destination resort aspect, which would be its own standalone ordinance. So that, that challenge can, can proceed without impacting or calling into question the baseline TPM regulations. Um, that, that allows, because, and, and Tanya mentioned this earlier in her presentation, um, most of the comments were related to service centers in destination resorts. And, um, staff is, is responding to that.
Twenty of them were against it, yes.
Yeah. So it just, it just puts them each in their own separate bucket. The schedule would be the same for adoption and all of that. It would happen the same meeting and all of that. But that is the staff recommendation.
And I support that.
Seems to make sense.
Okay. So, let me make sure I don't have anything else to say. Okay. So as a summary, we have, I'll go this way. All right. Question number one, the hours, the hours will match OHA hours, six AM to eleven fifty-nine. This is of service centers, excuse me. That's item number one. Item number two, uh, concerning manufacturing in the forest, uphold the planning commission recommendation to allow manufacturing in the F one and F two zones. Three, destination resorts, allow service centers in destination resorts as a conditional use. That was option C.
Which is going to go to a zone separate.
This will be, yeah, now we're on ordinance number, uh, twenty twenty-two zero one five. Then we will choose option E, adopting languages, um, the language in, she's County Code eighteen one thirteen zero three zero D seven, uh, to modify the wellness determination that was suggested in the, uh, the Emerged Law Group testimony to the staff recommendation of being in that commercial area of the destination resort. Item number four, should psilocybin service centers be prohibited as home occupations of commercial activities? No, it should not be prohibited. It will be, we will continue to, uh, keep that, those doors open. They aren't specific, uh, there's not specific language in code saying this is allowed, I don't think, but it's, um, it will be allowed. It will not be prohibited as home occupations and commercial activities in conjunction with farm use. That sound right?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
You've got it.
Good, good. Thank you. Thanks for bearing with me. I know it's, there's a lot of branches. So with all of that, thank you. Um, staff will compile these options, um, in a few minutes and will go back. We plan to return to the board on Monday, December nineteenth, with, uh, with two ordinances reflecting all of these changes, the, um, findings and, and code chapters to reflect all of this. Should we prepare emergency and non-emergency options? I think we will, um, for, for, to have both options ready and we'll go from there.
Great. Thank you so much, Tanya.
Thank you.
I mean, and just kind of return to the high level again, um, and as it relates to emergency or non-emergency adoption, I, um, I, I feel like, uh, this is the best we could do with the limited time that we had. Um, but I by no means think that this set of TPMs actually provides significant opportunities for service centers, um, which is what the, which is what the voters asked for. Um, so it is, it's possible that, you know, even though I, I think that this is the, the, the best set of TPMs we could develop with the, the limited time that we had, I may still vote against it to maintain, uh, you know, a 90-day window for anyone who wants to come in with a similar use application to, to give that a shot.
Great.
Thank you.
Do you want a break?
I would.
Okay. Well, I don't know. Stephanie's here. She's ready to go. Okay, Stephanie, we're gonna take a three-minute break if you don't mind.
How about four?
Four, four, two. We're going to take-
[inaudible]
Thank you so much, Stephanie. Stephanie one, Stephanie two, go ahead.
All right, for the record, Stephanie Robinson, administrative analyst. I'm here this morning to go over the arts and culture grant allocations for 2023. The board designated $25,000 during the video lottery allocation in the spring dedicated to supporting arts and culture initiatives in Deschutes County. For some background on this grant program, there are three categories we ask for an organization to address in their applications. These include seeking to increase arts and culture opportunities in Deschutes County, making arts and culture education available for Deschutes County residents, and/or contributing to the local economy. This year, we received 16 applications with a total of $64,450 in requests. I'm here today to review those applications with you and determine awards.
And we were just talking before we reconvened. We actually added $13,500 last year for the allocations. So that's why it might look like a little bit more in the 22 column.
Yeah.
So, and Stephanie just said that our allocation, our lottery projection is to be at 1.1 million at the end of the year. So I didn't know if you wanted to-
Our reserve?
Right, uh-huh. I thought it might be important to talk about that right now before we get into it.
No, I mean, this is a massive amount of requests from great organizations and trying to meet some of that request with just $25,000 is a lousy position to be in.
It seemed like five was the, yeah, a lot of people-
That's the-
That was the maximum, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, so-
I don't remember how we got to adding 13,000 last year, whether we just kind of went through and then at the end said, okay, we need 13,000 more, or whether we decided in advance that we were going to, that we were open to adding funds from those lottery reserves. But-
Stephanie wouldn't remember. Maybe Whitney remembers.
Oh, good, she watched.
I watched the video from last year.
Awesome.
And you went through and just kind of saw what it came out to at the end. So went through each one, and then it ended up being 13,500 over.
Okay.
But we indicated at the beginning that we were open.
Yes.
Okay.
It would, to fund everybody in full, it would take 39,450, so another additional on top of the 25,000. Okay, so you want to go through each one then?
Sure.
Thank you.
The first request is from Beat Children's Theater. They're requesting $5,000. Funding would support general program operations related to theater productions, including in-school educational outreach in 11 Title I schools in the Ben Lepine and Redmond School districts. These costs may include royalties, scripts, printing, staff support, props, sets, makeup, and promotion. Beat offers various in-school theater programming and theater camps to support artistic options for students. Programs include student cultural performances, before-and-after-show workshops, and mini residencies.
$4,000.
That's what we did last year. I'd stay with the four.
Just trying to get something out there.
No, I think four is good.
Okay.
The next application is from Ben Film. They're requesting $5,000. Funding will be used to support the creation and distribution of marketing and outreach materials such as press releases, digital media, and print publications for the 2023 Out in Focus Film Festival. This event is being coordinated in partnership with Out Central Oregon and the Tower Theater. In its first year, the Out in Focus Film Festival will attract a local and regional audience to explore DEI issues through programming and dialogue. This festival plans to screen up to two films per day and expects 1,500 festival attendees.
Now, there's also a request from Out Central Oregon here for the same amount, and these are, they are separate requests. It's not two groups that are asking for the same thing, but we recorded them as two separate requests.
So they sent in two applications. The two organizations are working together to produce this event. Ben Film emphasized that their grant would be spent more on marketing and promotion of the event. And then Out Central Oregon is spending the money more on giving the rights to the films and showing the films, venue costs.
So, I mean, I, it seems like a political statement to be pushing some of this stuff is something I struggle with. I mean, arts and culture, and we're going to do an LGBTQ plus push, and I just really struggle with that. I just wanted to lay that out there a little bit. Is this arts and culture? And I mean, I'm hesitant to support that theme. I mean, I want arts and culture to be welcoming everybody, and it just turns a corner at some point when you're trying to put something out there. Trying, I don't need to go any farther.
I'd like to do 4,000 for Ben Film. That's what we did in '19. I mean, we gave him 3,000 last year, that's still for marketing.
I'd support 4,000.
And I guess I'd also say that, you know, art and arts and culture is really, there's a lot of niches within arts and culture. I mean, supporting a classical music event, I mean, not everyone likes classical music. But that doesn't mean that it's not, you know, that it doesn't have artistic value and it isn't important, you know, to the people who do like classical music. So I guess, you know, having a range of kinds of arts and culture opportunities in our community, I think is okay.
The next application is from Cascade School of Music. They're requesting $3,000. Funding will be used to offer a free community concert, the Cascade School of Music 20th Anniversary May Celebration. Students who participate in outreach programs such as their after-school orchestra will showcase their artistic talents at the Tower Theater. This organization strives to make music as accessible as possible to those who simply do not have the opportunity otherwise, which contributes to the overall health and well-being of our working community.
I'm supportive of this ask.
3,000?
Yes.
Yeah.
All right. The next application is from Central Oregon Center for the Arts. They're requesting $5,000. Funding will be used to cover some of the costs of a grant and project writer, one of the supporting processes that was highlighted in their recent discovery study, of which the county funded $7,000 of in previous grant awards. Other infrastructure needs that came out of the study included a donor database software, fundraising plan, business plan development, and a website update.
So this is for the grant's position, correct? That's, yes, I'm not supportive of this. I mean, I want to see the art center, but hiring somebody to ask somebody else to get more money is not a, not an invest, I mean, just with the resources that we're talking about here, I'm hesitant to support this.
I do think that it's going to take a lot of people exploring from a lot of different angles for us to eventually end up with an art center. And, you know, I don't know about $5,000, but I, you know, continuing to invest a little bit in a lot of different players who are trying to, trying to make this thing happen, I think is okay. But yeah, not, I wouldn't support the 5,000 level. I, you know, the 2,000 level from last year, I mean, that seems reasonable.
They are reaching out, they have, if you look at their donation list, so I'm okay with the 2,000. They have been trying to make something happen.
All right. The next application is from Central Oregon Community College Foundation. They're requesting $3,000 to support a Nancy R. Chandler Lecture Series event in May featuring food justice activist and James Beard Award-winning author Bryant Terry. Terry will lead an interactive discussion on how the food we eat directly affects issues such as poverty, sustainability, and cultural racism. Funds will be put towards Terry's speaking fee. In addition to the lecture, COCC is planning smaller secondary events with culinary students and social justice groups as well as a book signing.
I, once again, I'm kind of triggered with the social justice and the justice activist terms in here. I don't understand how this fits in. I mean, let's celebrate different, you know, cultures, smells, food history and all that, but when you add the justice activist in there, I don't, I just don't even understand it.
It does say James Beard, though. That makes me really hungry.
Yeah, it's almost lunchtime.
I'm like going, wow.
But it's just got that political tone to it again. I mean, as soon as we get started, it's like, oh, we're going to do this. I'm just letting you know, that's where I'm at.
Well, I mean, you know, one of the ways to think about this is you've expressed real concern about the, you know, the economic opportunities for people who are trying to ranch, for example, and, you know, how a lack of, a lack of meat processing, you know, that's not like highly centralized, really results in producers getting the shaft economically. I mean, that's, those are some of the kinds of issues that, in a lecture like this could address.
So, and if it was written, I'm just saying how it's written up for myself. How to eat more meat, local meat production, done, let's go.
But that's a political preference also.
Healthy protein sources created in Central Oregon.
Yeah, no, it's a, but it's a political preference. I'm in line with it, but I, you know, we just need to acknowledge that, you know-
No, you don't need to, I just shared my thoughts.
It's interesting, because Mrs. Russell is on the board. There's several people.
For me, it's tricky, because, because I, you know, I think about arts and culture, and then I think about food. And for me, on any given evening, the two things are distinct from each other. You know, like I go out to dinner, and then I go watch a film. And that's, there's, one part's the arts and culture part, and the other part is the food part, but-
Okay, why don't we come back to that one?
The next request is from the Central Oregon Community College Foundation, also from their community education department, requesting 3,000 to support a professional track for Deschutes County first responders as a part of their existing Spanish language and culture immersion program. First responders would participate in the week-long cultural immersion program in June and also receive 10 hours of Spanish language training specific to their field. Funds would be used to provide a stipend to tuition for Deschutes County first responders enrolling in the program and also provide class materials.
I'm fine, I'm fine with that.
The proposed amount of $3,000, I'm supportive also. Support that.
All right. The next application is from Central Oregon Master Singers. They're requesting $5,000 to support production costs for two week community concerts in the spring and fall of 2023. Grant dollars would support printing of programs, venue rental fees, and music costs. Central Oregon Master Singers performs at various locations throughout the year and takes pride in performing compositions by local composers, as well as people of color, women, and younger composers. There are about 50 singers in the Central Oregon group.
It's kind of maybe a big ask that I would support in some fashion, is my point. You know, this is one of those, like a free concert series. I'm just thinking, me personally, I would love to be at this free concert, but usually my schedule is such that it's only hit or miss that I might even be able to make one of these. But I'm supportive of some amount here. I don't know if anybody has ideas.
I know, since it is the first ask, but it is, it's such a positive thing. We need more singing in our world. Maybe the 3,000? I don't know.
I'd support 3,000.
We definitely need some more songs, laughter.
The next application is from Central Oregon Writers Guild. They're requesting $2,200 to be used towards securing four professional writers that will facilitate 2023 writing workshops for Central Oregon writers. The Visiting Writer Program seeks to expand the education and learning of members and potential-
I, you know, the 2,000 level from last year, I mean, that seems reasonable.
They are reaching out, they have, if you look at their donation list, so I'm, I'm okay with the 2,000. They, they have been trying to make something happen.
All right. The next application is from Central Oregon Community College Foundation. They're requesting $3,000 to support a Nancy R. Chandler Lecture Series event in May featuring food justice activist and James Beard Award-winning author Bryant Terry. Terry will lead an interactive discussion on how the food we eat directly affects its issues such as poverty, sustainability, and cultural racism. Funds will be put towards Terry's speaking fee. In addition to the lecture, COCC is planning smaller secondary events with culinary students and social justice groups as well as a book signing.
I, once again, I'm kind of triggered with the social justice and the justice activist terms in here. I don't understand how this fits in. I mean, let's celebrate different, you know, cultures, smells, food history and all that, but when you add the justice activist in there, I'm, I don't, I just don't even understand it.
It does say James Beard, though. That makes me really hungry.
Yeah, it's almost lunchtime.
No, I'm like going, wow.
But it's just got that political tone to it again. I mean, as soon as we get started, it's like, oh, we're going to do this. I'm just letting, you know, that's where I'm at.
Well, I mean, you know, one of the ways to think about this is you've, you've expressed real concern about the, you know, the economic opportunities for people who are, who are trying to ranch, for example, and, you know, how, um, a lack of, a, a lack of meat processing, you know, that's not like highly centralized, um, really results and producers get in the shaft economically. I mean, that's, uh, those are some of the kinds of issues that, that, um, yeah, and a, a lecture like this could, could address.
So, and if it was written, I'm just saying how it's written up for myself. How to Eat More Meat, Local Meat Production, done, let's go.
But that's a political preference also.
Healthy protein sources created in Central Oregon.
Yeah, no, it's a, it's a, but it's a political preference. I, I'm in, I'm in line with it, but I, you know, we just need to acknowledge that, that,
No, you don't need to, I just shared my thoughts.
It's interesting because Mrs. Russell is on the board. There's several people.
For me, it's tricky because, because I, I, you know, I think about arts and culture and then I think about food. Um, and, and for me, on any given evening, the, the two things are distinct from each other. You know, like I go out to dinner and then I go watch a film. And that's, there's, that's, one part's the arts and culture part and the other part is the food part, but, um...
Okay, why don't we come back to that one?
The next request is from the Central Oregon Community College Foundation, also from their Community Education Department, requesting 3,000 to support a professional track for Deschutes County first responders as a part of their existing Spanish language and culture emo- immersion program. First responders would participate in the week-long cultural immersion program in June and also receive 10 hours of Spanish language training specific to their field. Funds would be used to provide a stipend to tuition for Deschutes County first responders enrolling in the program and also provide class materials.
I'm fine, I'm fine with that.
The proposed amount of $3,000, I'm supportive also. Support that.
All right. The next application is from Central Oregon Master Singers. They're requesting $5,000 to support production costs for two community concerts in the spring and fall of 2023. Grant dollars would support printing of programs, venue rental fees, and music costs. Central Oregon Master Singers performs at various locations throughout the year and takes pride in performing compositions by local composers, as well as people of color, women, and younger composers. There are about 50 singers in the Central Oregon group.
Uh, it's kind of a, maybe a big ask that I would support in some fashion is my point. Uh, you know, this is one of those, like a free concert series. I'm just thinking, me personally, I would love to be at this free concert, but usually my schedule is such that it's only hit or miss that I might even be able to make one of these. But I'm supportive of some amount here. I don't know if anybody has ideas.
I know, since it is the first ask, um, but it is, it's such a positive thing. We need more singing in our world. Maybe the 3,000? I don't know.
I'd support 3,000.
We definitely need some more songs, laughter.
Our next application is from Central Oregon Writers Guild. They're requesting $2,200 to be used towards securing four professional writers that will facilitate 2023 writing workshops for Central Oregon writers. The Visiting Writer Program seeks to expand the education and learning of members and potentially draw new members. The target population is writers high school age and older. Each workshop has 15 to 20 participants for a total of 75 to 100 annually. Last year, these workshops all sold out.
That's great.
I'd support the full amount for that.
So would I.
The next application is from High Desert Museum. They're requesting $5,000. Funding would support the Little Wonders Program, ensuring young learners from low-income families in Deschutes County have access to arts and culture experiences. Little Wonders directly serves Head Start families in Deschutes County, providing over 600 families with free memberships and $10 gas cards. They host family night events and estimate that about 100 of these families will make repeat visits to the museum.
About $4,000 is incrementing it by 500.
4,000?
Support 4,000.
And there's our negative balance now. So that, that was 25,200, yeah.
They actually got their first IRS letter in 1976. The High Desert did.
Yep, so our balance is 25,200 and there are seven more requests. The next application is from Out Central Oregon. This is the same event we talked about previously. Funding for this organization would support film licensing fees and venue rental for the 2023 Out and Focus Film Festival. They're requesting $5,000 also. Films will vary in topic and subject matter to enhance attendee experience. Filmmakers will also host important Q and A discussion on each film's topic.
It is, it is a second request for the same activity, um, which I'm supportive of, but I, I, I don't, now I'm, now I'm wondering whether we should go back and, you know, I, I might support going back and like splitting the 4,000 between, between these two requests as, um... Because, yeah, 10, yeah, asking for $10,000 for this one festival, I think, is, is way too much.
Yeah.
I, I am supportive, but...
I, I'm happy just to leave the four in the Ben Film for now and... It sounds like they're both going to be using it. I mean, they're in partnership.
Could we tell them that we want to provide four between the two, between the two requests and they can sort of sort it out or would that be all right?
That'd be more polite.
I can do that.
Okay. So two and two?
Or they can, they can figure it out. Well, unless you want to assign it.
No, I mean, it's just that it's because it's, it's their 501(c)(3), so they have separate ones, I'm sure.
Yeah, yeah. But yeah, I mean, we could assign portions of the 4,000 or we could just let them figure it out between them and, and tell us.
What's, what's better for their business?
I will say Ben Film applied first and then suggested that, um, Out Central Oregon apply. Maybe feel like Ben Film is kind of managing most of the event.
Okay.
Okay.
Let's just leave it there.
Just leave it with them and, but, but tell them that it's for both of them.
The next application is from Scale House. They're requesting $5,000. Funding will be used to support five exhibitions in the Scale House Gallery. The goal is to attract 200 attendees, including community members, students, and tourists. Costs may include installation costs, signage, marketing, shipping, and artist talks. Scale House is a contemporary art center that convenes various artists for discussions, collaborations, exhibitions, and events. All events are free and rely on sponsorship dollars.
I think that $2,000 is the magic number for me at this point, so I really support, you know, getting the, uh, the, uh, displays rotated and getting different artists in. And I've, I've just been in there once or twice.
Yeah, we, I think we could leave it at two.
I would love to see it bump up a little bit, but we don't go all the way to five, but...
Is there a different proposal?
How about three?
I'll support that.
They have some really amazing exhibits at Scale House.
The next application is from Sun River Music Festival. They're requesting $3,000 to bring a top-quality pianist and music educator to Central Oregon for the annual piano showcase. This event offers both performances and educational workshops, as well as an educational performance in a self-Deshutes County school prior to the event. The event will attract music lovers of all ages, both locals and visitors. Sun River Music Festival expects 250 concert goers for this evening concert.
I'm happy with the three.
I'll support that also.
Sun River Stars Community Theater. They're requesting $3,000. Funding will be put toward the royalty costs of scripts and music for four 2023 live theater shows, as well as costumes and materials for each show. Funding will also support the organization's free drama camp and theater production for elementary and middle school children. This programming is completely free for families. Sun River Stars provides a hands-on learning experience and opportunity to participate in live theater and stagecraft for all interested adults and children.
We attended a play probably before COVID, so I don't, I know it really slowed people down in live theater for a while, but there's some really engaged people in this project.
3,000.
There you go.
Okay, the next application is from Three Sisters Cultural Society. They're requesting 2,250 to support the use of technology to preserve and catalog photographs, add oral histories and videos, and offer interactive exhibits, all expanding the museum's outreach. Some projects include creating an organized online collection of historic photographs for web-based content and a digital and interactive story map of sisters' history. Grant funds would be spent on software and technology equipment to do these projects. This organization began in 2017 and has spent the last two years focused on the museum and developing exhibits about local history.
I'm supportive.
I'm sure it'll make a difference for them, the 2250.
Wonderful, two more. The next application is from Tower Theater Foundation. They're requesting $5,000 for the two-day Stage the Change Conference for high school students. This program teaches students how to be an advocate for social justice cases and using performing arts as a platform to raise their own voices. Conference, conference registration fees are only $20, so students from all socioeconomic backgrounds across the Pacific Northwest can participate. The goal is to have 250 participants in 2023.
Oh, it's kind of like my statement before. I mean, leading with social justice causes is, just turns a political corner for me and I don't even know how, yeah. I'm hesitant to support.
This is a, a really important population, high school kids, and the Tower Theater is a, a really important cultural institution in, in our community. I, I would, I would suggest 4,000 for this project.
What, what's a statement saying, I'm going to, I'm going to offer a program to the kids and we're going to talk about justice, social justice, arts and culture? So I am not supportive.
Oh, Search the Change.
I mean, if, uh, if you want to unpack what you don't like about social justice, it might help to understand your perspective a little more, but...
Well, it's just a high-level statement. I mean, anybody, anywhere I could find something you don't like. So are we just creating, are we going to invest in people that want to be upset? Or defining reasons we should be upset?
Um, could we come back to that one?
Okay, the next request is from Young Audiences. They're requesting $5,000 to support contracts with teaching artists who go into classrooms to facilitate arts education and learning experiences. Oftentimes, Young Audiences programs may be the only art services offering that some students receive in a year. All of their services are free. Young Audiences has a new local program coordinator, specific to Deschutes County, who has been building relationships with local schools and teaching artists to serve students in the community with arts education.
If I'm remembering correctly, we did not fund this one last year because there was, it wasn't, it wasn't really clear how, how locally-led of an effort this was. And, you know, how much local engagement there was and, you know, kind of was like, is this, is this an organization from, you know, big metropolitan area that's trying to expand their work to, to, to Central Oregon? Just, but I can't remember if we actually got any, um, further information, um... That would, that would dispel that kind of, that perception.
Well, we, well, the new manager is from here. She went to Redmond High School.
Okay.
So they have actually engaged locally, because I believe that's, they hadn't before and we weren't...
Maybe I'm not remembering correctly.
Organization, um...
She was Sergeant 21.
And they've previously kind of been, like you said, in more metro areas in Oregon and Washington.
Okay, so I am remembering correctly, but they've, they've changed, they've, they, they fixed it by, by, you know, demonstrating a commitment to, to local programming.
Well, and I, we've done some really great investments here, a lot of local arts and culture programs, so I'm not supportive of this one. And as I say, if there's a relationship to be made, that's fine. I can do that in the future, but I don't have that at this time.
Um, it's for kids and I would, I would do 4,000. If someone else would join me. I just, it's, you know, our kids have been so short-changed. There's, you know, the, um, their programs go from puppetry, songwriting, sculpture, um, dance, drumming. It just seems like kids need more, more things to be happy about.
I, I'm supportive of, of something. I, I mean, uh, as a new grantee, I, you know, my, I, maybe three would...
Sure, three's better than zero. And it's for kids.
Yeah, it is for kids. And definitely arts programs at schools are not what they used to be.
Okay, so I think, what, we needed to go back to food justice?
Yep, that one and, um, the Tower Theater.
Uh, just another follow-up on, I mean, just writing these up in a different way may be the way to go. I just hesitated to support these things that sound like we're dividing instead of bringing us together.
I mean, I, you know, in my mind, you know, when, when you say social justice, I think about people like Mother Teresa and Martin Luther King, um, who are working for social justice and I, I don't, I don't think of that as divisive myself, but, um... You know, for the, for this, uh, this particular request, this food justice lecture, you know, I do think, I, in my mind, food is different than arts and culture, um, and we did support the, the COCC for this other, this other request.
The Spanish language.
So I, I'd be comfortable not, uh, not investing in that one.
Okay.
I could also, I could also be persuaded if, if, uh, Commissioner Deere is, is...
No, I tend to go...
If you're warm on this one, then I... Food is culture.
He is, James Beard Award-winning, so he is, he has an amazing, uh, you know, title, he's got amazing credentials, so I, I would do, um, 1,500 and maybe they would, they will have to find another way to come up with the other 1,500?
About a thousand.
A thousand, okay, that thousand's fine. I just think because he definitely, to get a James Beard, I mean, I, I buy those cookbooks. So then we need to look at the Tower Theater. Are there any other programs that we've done that have, are at the Tower Theater on here? Stephanie?
Two, two past years of grants, so...
Yep, two past years of arts and culture grants. One of the...
We did a lot of discretionary grants.
The Cascade School of Music 20th Anniversary May Celebration is being held at the Tower Theater.
That's what I was thinking.
Um, Tower Theater is also one of the three partners in the 2023 Out and Focus Film Festival, but they didn't apply for that in this application.
Okay.
Yeah, I, I'm supporting events that are going to happen at the Tower Theater is not the same as supporting the programming that the theater is leading. All it means is that the Tower Theater is a really central cultural, you know, venue for our, for our community.
Well, and I was there for, not in my backyard, I think it is. So...
About 3,000.
How much?
How about 3,000?
Um, well, how about just, because I, I don't, you know, I'm, how about going back to 2,500? I just feel like, um, Stage the Change, we need, we really need to bring people together, so 2,500 would do it.
Okay.
For me.
Okay.
So where are we at now? 42?
Yep, 42,950.
So just a little bit more than last year, 17,950? Then we'd have to move over? Does that sound good, guys?
Yep.
Yep.
That's inflation, isn't it? All right.
Well, I think, I don't know how this, this set compares to last year, but it seems like there's more applications.
Same, so same number of applications. Last year, the total...
Bigger, bigger requests.
60,000.
60?
Okay, okay.
Well, it's wonderful to be able to spend dollars, send dollars out to the community for arts and cultural programs, you know, I mean, putting a smile on somebody's face, experiencing live music. One of the most amazing things still to this day to me, and I used to play trumpet in the band or whatever, but take a stringed instrument and make beautiful music out of it, take a keyboard and a piano, and just, beautiful music comes out. I can't do that, but seeing it happen is just amazing. So that's the music path, but, yeah, lots of other things could put smiles on people's faces also.
And then the importance of arts and culture in nurturing people through the pandemic is also huge, so it's, you know, smiles are super important, and just kind of, you know, nurturing the soul is also extremely important.
That's why I love watching the Bentei girls play volleyball, and they were out there laughing, and, oh my gosh, it was so great. They looked so happy, and I think they, you know, they, what, they got second in state, so it was amazing. They were really good. Okay, so we're good with that?
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Stephanie's, thank you, Stephanie's. Thank you, Stephanie Rappertson. All right, so other items? I don't know if you all were on that call yesterday with AOC and Senate Bill 762 with Senator Golden, but I did that for a bit before we had to come downstairs.
I missed it, I was still on the road.
Yeah, I didn't get that far either.
Okay, anyway, I did do that, and you were on that too, Nick?
For a little bit until, the same, until I also came down, yes.
I did catch the 762 session at, at Vegas, the annual conference. Curious whether there was...
It was some of the same players, it was the same players.
In fact...
It sounds like, yeah, isn't it like, is it OSU is doing the remap, and I'm thinking like, well, they did the first one, so what is the difference this time, you know?
And the intent was this session yesterday was a follow-up from the AOC conference. In fact, Senator Golden was pretty clear at the start, let's not consume all of our time with presentations and us speaking, let's make sure they had adequate time for questions and answers, which we were not able to hear because we had the Budget Committee meeting that started, so, yeah.
Well, and I was able to, and Commissioner Chang was next to me, I think we were, at the moment, explaining to the senator about the concept of detaching the map from accessory dwelling units, and he's, his response was, "Oh, I hadn't thought about that." So it's just good that we were able to share the idea with him, at least.
Oh, no, he repeated it yesterday.
Good, yeah, but I mean, when we'd said it to him...
I put it in the chat, too.
He's like, "I hadn't heard about this idea."
Put it in the chat before I left.
I also shared with him the idea of taking a presumptive approach, and just, you know, assuming that areas that everybody knows are gonna be classified as higher extreme risk, just adopt those, those higher standards and are good to go, you know, to proceed at that point.
Also, other items, next, I think it's Tuesday, the 20th? We've got the Project Wildfire, and when I saw this email come through, it's scheduled for 8:00 to 9:30, either virtually or in person, and I was wondering if the, my fellow commissioners, somebody's attending or not to Project Wildfire currently?
I have been.
And would you, so then next, we're meeting at 9 o'clock with the Sun River Service District, so you'll be on the road that whole day.
Is that eight?
Eight o'clock, yeah.
Okay.
But, yeah, I was just making sure if somebody's attending, and I think we've ended up at the same meeting sometimes. In fact, what I'd like, I guess I'm offering, I'll dial in between 8:00 and 8:30 and then drive to Sun River that morning, and if you're on line two, that's fine.
Okay.
And then also, at that same time, 9 o'clock, the Solid Waste Advisory Committee meeting is meeting, Solid Waste Advisory Committee meeting, and I think there's gonna be a map with...
13 sites.
Yeah, multiple sites on it, but this is the first time we're gonna be pointing to sites, and I've said for years that the day we lay a map on a table, talking about a sighting of landfills, the day gets really interesting, so that's gonna be next. As I say, is this Tuesday, sorry, December 20th, whenever the...
Right. That's Tuesday.
Yeah, Tuesday, yep.
And I would just say, on the same theme with the Solid Waste Advisory Committee meeting, I had, I reviewed the packet and I didn't see those 13 sites on a map.
I think they're gonna, yeah, bring them out at the meeting.
That's what they're gonna do at the meeting and then post it immediately after the meeting, so if the commissioners aren't interested, I asked for it separately.
Yeah.
He did just set out something else, though, I thought. I thought I saw that everybody that's on that map's been contacted.
Yes.
And then he had personal people that he knew that he had to contact, let them know, so...
Yes. Perhaps he's shared the same map with the full board.
I think we also got correspondence, we probably all got it, from the BLM, Bureau of Land Management, about their review process for the City of Redmond's disposal wastewater facility. So it's just kind of a little packet we received in the mail, and it has the map, so this is their action of really reviewing that. Have you received this? Yeah, just making sure.
Yes.
Okay.
Will this be the first Project Wildfire meeting for Keith?
Yeah.
And Corinne?
Yeah, Kevin, yeah, Kevin Moriarty, our new county forester, and Corinne.
Yeah, we gotta make some relationships there.
Yes.
So this will be their first Project Wildfire meeting?
It will be. We've had a nice coordination meeting, including Eric Crop and Joe Stutler, and I'm not remembering the person at the Road Department that helps with our weed management, so we've been coordinating and making sure everybody knows each other and building those relationships. So, and it was important that we have this meeting, just to get everybody together and keep our, keep our project going forward, because as we know, our fire year, not our fire season, is never-ending, so...
Yes, for sure.
I got some, some branch piles under snow now, so I'll go dig them out and burn them sometime this winter.
My neighbor's already burning his this week.
Good week.
And I have a couple of additional items when you're ready.
Oh, I did, I did, the safe parking program is being held up a bit because of an insurance issue, and so I did talk to Rick Russell the other day, and then I talked to Chris, and he was gonna, I believe, talk to Randy, the fleet manager, if we had an old car that we could donate for that program. I know we had some, a couple cars that we were in the process of sending out, out to other uses. So, in order to get that program going, we may need to donate an old car so that they can drive in a car that's the program's car, because the way it is now, the Sierra that runs, is the behavioral health person that runs it, she drives her own car and the insurance won't cover, so anyhow, trying to just get it going, it's, you know, it's December, so hopefully, I'll hear back something good, right?
So if it was a county vehicle that...
Well, we could donate, remember, the Sheriff's Office just donated one to a 501(c)(3), so I...
Disposal vehicles.
Yeah, so I was trying to find one that they could use, because it would just be driving, like, in Redmond, it wouldn't be driving very far for that program, just, yeah.
They just need to show up in not a personal vehicle.
Well, they have to, it has to be a vehicle that their policy can insure, per our requirements for our insurance, so they were running into a real roadblock, they couldn't find insurance that was gonna cover that part of the automobile. I know, and they've been working on it for a couple weeks, and Ron, who's on our board, I ran into him a couple weeks ago, and he said, "Oh, my gosh, Patty, I'd never heard of that kind of a requirement," so I know this is, this is a issue, and just trying to help them, so...
And I followed up with Chris, and he's, of course, happy to coordinate on a solution. The only challenge we have with a couple of the vehicles right now is that it's taking so long to get the replacement vehicles, just given all the supply chain, that they may very well be available, but it may take a couple more months. So he's, they're coordinating and hoping that we can get those replacement vehicles in soon.
Great.
Yeah.
Well, let's see, who does, who do I know that just bought a vehicle? Yeah. No, one of my neighbors just bought one, and he took whatever, almost had to buy a Canadian Kia, and it ends up, if you buy a Canadian Kia, it has no warranty rights in America, so he ended up having to turn that one back, so... All right, Nick, you have some items?
The two items I have, commissioners, we received a request from Envision Bend for an additional $25,000 to support the project. The board received a letter from Envision Bend Executive Director Laura Fritz. I can provide a summary of any of the information that you wish, but otherwise, just to get your, any initial thoughts, or if you'd like for them to come back, or if you would like to decide either way on that as a full board.
Can you remind us the earlier contribution, how much was that?
25,000. They had initially asked for 50,000, the board committed 25,000, and so they're requesting an additional 25,000.
And we had actually, if I remember correctly, we specifically said, "Let's see how you do with your other requests as well," and, and they have, you know, since that time, they did, they did manage to secure more from the City of Bend, and so kind of, if our concern was, you know, are other people, are other funders committed to this, you know, that, that addresses that concern and demonstrates that there are other funders who are committed to this.
I'm okay with the 25 that we already did, at this time.
And I'm not supportive, I mean, I want them to go ahead and do whatever they want to do, but using these public dollars, once again, we've got lots of ways we can invest money, we're doing a comprehensive plan, City of Bend is putting out, you know, requests right now for public input, for their budget planning process, the Fire District from the City of Bend, so people are getting hit so many ways about, "Well, what's your opinion?" And, as I say, I'd rather just get real focused and stay focused on our comprehensive plan update, which is exactly where I was the first time we discussed this.
Okay, I'm not hearing support for the...
Okay.
Additional 25,000.
I would support an additional contribution, but that's just one.
Okay. The second item I have is the Environmental Center asked if Deschutes County would like to participate on the Energy Plan Work Group, and I provided just a summary of the bullet points before you there, for the community. So for me, it's just a matter of, do we, do we participate on that committee, and if, and if so, then I would work with Admin or CDD in terms of who would be our participant, but it would be an allocation of resources in terms of staff time to serve on that, on the committee, so I'm just seeking your direction on whether to allocate resources to serve on the Environmental Center's Energy Plan Work Group.
Is this something Jen would do, or is this out of her, is Jen out of this?
It could be Jen Patterson, or it could be a member of the Community Development Department. Either way, we haven't decided, we would look more in-depth into the project to determine who would be the best person, but it very well could be Jen, especially given her work with CPACE, that energy, renewable energy program, but we would, we would decide.
Okay. All right, so you want to do that, then, Nick?
Well, I'm just asking for the board's direction on, do we want to participate in the Energy Plan Work Group? They asked for us to apply if we're, if we'd like to, if we'd like to serve.
So I'm not directly supportive of this, you know, it's great that we have people worried about wanting to study energy usage and evaluate how things could be better or whatever, but I mean, that's just not a core function of what we're doing here at Deschutes County. I know people believe in all kinds of things and want to do a bunch of studies and share the information, but I wouldn't support staff time on this. I mean, if there's a report available and they want to share some information, that's fine.
I, I would support staff participation, I do think that developing energy opportunities in our, in our community, encouraging energy efficiency in our opportunity, in our, in our community is, is our business. But, you know, that's just me. I mean, I guess the one other thing I would say is that, if you're not at the table, then you're on the menu, so, I mean, if there are requests, recommendations, you know, proposed projects that come out of this planning effort, if we're not involved in the planning effort, then they can hit us in the back of the head, out of the blue.
Oh, wonderful.
Well, I already said that I thought it was a good idea that we evaluate who would be the best to serve here. It is interesting, what do they do? They took the coal plant out of Boardman, and yet, I believe in Germany, I'm hearing they're building coal plants. Has anybody else heard that? Or is that just what my husband told me? Anyway, yeah, so energy, and I'm just trying to get that juniper pelletizing operation going in my neighborhood. Instead of burning it, I would like to, like, pelletize it, if possible. So anything else? Whitney, do you have something?
I'm sorry, I just missed, I didn't, I didn't kind of hear where you were with our participating on the...
Oh, I think it's a good idea. I think we should look into it and see who would be the best fit.
Okay, thank you, and what we will do, we will check in with the board before we, I mean, always on, before we take any positions or et cetera, so, okay, thank you.
Whitney?
I'm finished, thank you. Just, commissioners, you likely saw, you have Leadership Bend coming up in January on your calendars, and staff just wanted to check in on if you would like us to prepare a presentation for you to give to the class, or if you'd prefer to handle this one in a more informal approach. I think with Leadership Bend and Redmond, you've kind of done both over the years, and so just wanted to check in on your preference for this year.
Let's get a presentation, let's get it early so we can kind of look at it and personalize it.
Yes, we will do that, and we'll get that to you about two weeks before your schedule to prepare.
What's the date of that?
The 17th of January in the afternoon, you'll be in this room.
Okay.
We'll get working on that and get a draft to you.
Thank you, Whitney.
What, what happens over and over again is, we give a presentation, we run way longer than anticipated, and there's no time for question and answer, so, I mean, I think an entirely different approach would be actually to open it up for question and answer, so that there's actually time to do that with these groups, and I'd like us to consider that.
But some people don't actually even realize what we do, so that's the other side of it, you know, you could say, "Okay, everyone can ask one question first, and then we'll tell you what we do, and then you can ask more questions," because, you know, it is, it is a pretty amazing job with a lot of different responsibilities, what is it, our 22 departments? So, not everyone has any idea.
My thought, just to throw in the mix here, probably about four or five slides, you know, just the basics, the big picture, you know, some nice smiling photos, and the org chart of the organization, and then go from there. And, yeah, I mean, I don't mind having time for questions, we should find that out, that's not a problem, I don't know, maybe, maybe going out of our ways, telling them, "Prepare with questions," because you could end up in both situations, where people had asked questions, ready to go, and we didn't have time, or, "Okay, next 20 minutes is questions, and then there's crickets."
Or they could give us questions before they meet with us.
We can definitely coordinate with chamber staff, and we'll prepare a short deck with prompts for questions for the board's feedback, and we'll try and give multiple opportunities for you to interact with that class, because I know that they're usually a very engaged group, so...
And we could have to look at a timer when we're talking, right? That would keep us...
Different to the board on that, but...
I'm certainly not worried about there not being any questions, if we, if we actually give people time to ask questions. More, my concern is more on the other end, that we never give people time to ask questions, so...
Oh, my gosh.
Thanks.
Anything else? If not, then we are adjourned until Monday at 1:00 PM. Thank you very much.